Assistant County Council had to be taken to the hospital.
Oh, you did?
I remember.
Call the meeting to order. Go on.
Supervisor Bennett?
From the Diet.
Here and Chairman, I'm going to have to step out in a few minutes. I just want any potential public speakers to know I have a call here.
Supervisor Parks?
I'm here, Andy.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Voight?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zaragosa.
Yeah, we have Nancy is going to help us today and say a couple of words. Nancy and also help us with the pledge afterwards.
Good morning, Chair Zaragosa and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Nancy Pedersen and I thank you for allowing me to speak with you this morning. In April, we celebrate Earth Day and it's also Wetlands Month. So it's my pleasure to tell you about the outdoor campus at Ormond Point where I'm the volunteer director. The city of Oxnard owns the land we use for hands-on learning.
Nancy, put the mics together.
Last year, 1,900 students came out to use our area. They were from schools countywide and they were part of Merito Academy and Restore Project. The students do water testing and remove non-native plants and replace them with native plants. We go bird watching. The grants these programs receive pay for the curriculum, classroom resources, buses, other educational materials, and native plants. The city of Oxnard is an active partner in making these programs a vital part of the education of students who will, we hope, one day be stewards of the wetlands. Every time a class comes out, I'm inspired by the students who arrive, who have never been to the ocean or seen a wetlands. Often, they have never used binoculars or gone bird watching. I recently derived great inspiration from a group of three teenage boys whose teacher informed me that should we have problems, he would be immediately happy to put them on the bus and send them back and had already made arrangements for that. We went out bird watching with them and 12 other students. They actually held up our group and we came back five minutes late because they were in a huddle, speaking in very low hushed voices so as not to scare the bird, to determine whether the bird they were observing had a gray-green head or a blue-gray head. Were the feathers gray? Were they kind of tan? Could they be brown? They weren't quite sure. They had three birds that they narrowed it down to. They finally correctly identified it as a mallard. Their teacher did not believe me when I told him that's why we came back late, but that's actually what happened. And that wasn't something that he expected and I don't think it's something that the students themselves expected. But that's what happens when you get children in an environment where 13, 14, and 15-year-old boys can go bird watching and actually learn what they're doing. I also derive great satisfaction and inspiration from the students who see no reason why our resident hummingbird, the boss, shouldn't attend all of our bird watching activities. We go out bird watching, he trails along. None of the students in the last 12 years have ever seen anything wrong with that. He's been following us on bird watching for six years and he just seems to be very comfortable making sure that we do it right. The teachers think it's odd. I think it's a little strange and the students that come out just accept it as part of what you do in the wetlands. The children learn by going out and actually seeing what they learn in the classroom. They do hands-on learning. They enjoy our rules and in many cases are very different from what they are doing in school. In our outdoor classroom, you play in the mud. You make mud balls with seeds inside so that we can plant even when the children aren't there. Just before they get on the bus to leave, they all get to line up and seed balls from the classes from last year are thrown as far and as hard as they can into the heart of the wetland in areas that are too boggy for us to walk into. They aren't allowed to do either one of those in most cases in their classrooms and they really enjoy having rules that are completely the opposite of what they usually are told to do. It's also a great learning experience because they're planting 60 plants with each seed ball and they find that really amazing and they sit there and do the math to see how many they plant with four. It's a math lesson. We don't tell them that, but they still learn. This month, we dedicated the Roma Gene 4-H Educational Wetland Path at Ormond Point.
And you probably had about 150 people there, right?
Yes. We still had people coming at 1:00 and we were supposed to leave at 1:00. So we stayed late, which was kind of a nice problem to have. We also have an Eagle Scout who will be doing his Hornet Day project out and he's starting the first phase of that this Sunday. We had a Girl Scout do her Golden Project, which is the kiosk in my outdoor classroom. We have another Girl Scout who's working to find a project she can do with me to get her Golden Project going. So we have a lot of different things going on and they're all positive and they're all wonderful. And one of the things that we like to say is that we're a resource for the entire county. The schools are from the entire countywide area. We have students coming out doing their projects from countywide area. Ormond is not just for Oxnard, although we like to make sure everyone knows it belongs to us, but it is really something that we share gladly, sometimes a little selfishly, with the rest of the county. And I really thank all of you for your support of the wetlands. I see some very familiar faces from different meetings I've gone to and I've worked with the chairman when he was on the Oxnard City Council and he was instrumental in helping us get the Ormond Beach area preserved and restored. So I thank all of you for allowing me to speak and I thank all of you for your wonderful support of the wetlands, which are so important. Thank you.
Nancy, thank you so much for the good work and I know that some of the students are taken out to the islands to remove some of the non-native plants that really helped them go out there to the islands and enjoy that great Channel Islands trip back and forth, you know. Will you share a little bit about that, just for two seconds?
The students are getting really good at removing ice plant. When they go out there, that's one of the major things that they pull up. And we actually spent two and a half years removing ice plant from my area and they were using that as kind of training to show them how to do it. Fortunately, I got rid of my ice plant much sooner than the islands did, but the kids that go out there are like little warriors. They go out there and they're all set. They're going to go pull that stuff up and they're going to really work hard and they really enjoy making a difference and seeing what's happened. Some of those children have started out in the elementary school program, Merito, and then graduated into Restore, which is the junior high and senior high program. So some of those kids have been in for four years.
Nancy, thank you so much and for your good work.
You're welcome.
Can you help us with the pledge?
Yes, I will. Hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Nancy. Is it okay now? Item five, the minutes?
Never mind. I was going to joke. You're faster than us, so.
What's the pledge of the board? And this is for the 27th. Okay. Motion, the second. Okay, agenda review. Michael?
Thank you, Chair Zaragosa. Do you have a few items? Consent agenda, item 12. There's a revised Exhibit 2, adding pages 2 through 8. Time certain agenda, item 22. There's a revised resolution. Time certain agenda, item 33. Exhibits 2 and 3 were distributed. And then finally, regular agenda, item 34. There's a revised board letter in Exhibit 1 due to Marcos Vargas withdrawing his name for whip board reappointment. That's it. Item 34.
34.
That's whip board.
Okay. What's the pledge of the board?
Move the agenda as modified?
Second. Thank you. Okay, item 7, 10 to 21. We have a speaker on 14 and that's Peter. Yeah. Peter.
I'm Peter LaFollette. I'm a Menhal Services Act consumer and advocate for quite a few years here. Under the Menhal Services Act contract that the director will be submitting to you today, under the division of the MHSA contract this morning, I believe it's PEI, but another is CSS, which is Community Support and Services, the contract needs to designate by law the line item to designate what monies go to direct services to consumers and Menhal Services Act stakeholders of what that contract serves. Otherwise, when you don't have that designation, it perpetuates an unbalanced system of service delivery where 80% of the designated funds go for salaries or administrative overhead. State law of the Services Act protects funds to provide support, hope, to those afflicted with mental illness and engaged in the recovery process. Thank you.
Thank you. What's the pledge of the board? Second. Okay. And I want to apologize for my voice this morning, but for public speakers, we have Linda.
Judge Frenchwater.
Yeah. Who's Linda? There she goes. Followed by Lucas Thayer. We already approved it.
Yes, already got approved.
We approved, item 10 has been approved already, so.
Right, approved?
Yeah.
Can I speak out?
What's the pledge of the board?
Come on.
And then we'll follow with Linda.
I'm not sitting in the government. I could do a little more research. I didn't realize it was approved so fast. It's kind of funny. About two weeks ago, my brother came up here to pay his property taxes and I said, why don't you go across the way and get the agenda? So he got the agenda and he read it and he called me and goes, man, I don't understand this. Everything on you says recommended for approval. Why do we have a Board of Supervisors? I mean, everything on there is approval. Why even, why are we even up here? Why do we vote? Everything's a 5-0, 4-1 vote. What I'm here to speak about is back in, back in July of 2010, I spoke about a lease that was being entered into by the county. It was a $14.3 million lease for the dance building over there that used to be the Borders Book Building and was formerly a bowling alley from 1958 on. At that, I raised the red flags about a $6.5 million tenant improvement we were spending for that project and I felt it was a taxpayer, giving a taxpayer money to a private person when in most leases, the landlord pays for the tenant improvements. My objections weren't heard very loudly and the argument was stated at that time that, oh, well, you know, it's medical, you know, most landlords don't pay for medical improvements. So here we are, sitting here, and I raised the red flags about taxes on commercial paper. So last night, I'm on my iPad looking at the agenda and I see, I can't open attachments. This morning, I opened attachment and there, lo and behold, somebody in our government's doing their job because now we're not using taxes on commercial paper. The big argument was, hey, we're going to use taxes on commercial paper to fund this and it's not going to affect the taxpayer. Well, now, it says right here, it says in your own letter dated the 24th or yes, it was on the agenda, it says, subsequent to approval, based on further review by our bound council tax section, was determined that due to the nature of our lease, which amounts for recreation, private lease, TEC tax and commercial paper is not allowed as a funding source. So now we're going to use general fund money, which is my property tax dollars, and it's for health services. I have no problem for health services, but that's not what we talked about in July of 2010 and then in January of 2011, when you approve the funding. What's disturbing is they're already doing the tenant improvement. They started in December of 2011. Now all of a sudden, you're changing the rules on the guys. I'm worried about the guys that are working out there. This isn't fair. So now we're going to use general fund money. Actually, if you go to the Star article on December 27th, the actual landlord states in his, in his blog, Larry Janßen, I'll give you a copy of it, he states, regarding the claim that taxpayers are paying $20 million, hooey! Bonds will only purchase by investors and repaid with user funds. Fees will finance improvements. The clients will likewise pay for the monthly rent through their payments for services. Then he goes on to comment other things. So here, the landlord is thinking that it's taxes on commercial paper. He has no, he has no problem with it. So now, fast forward to today, we're translating into general fund money. You've already voted for it, so, you know, as Linda would say, it's going to be a rocky road. We're going to have a rocky road ahead of us with all this money going out. I mean, just a week, three weeks ago, we gave $600,000 in taxpayer money to the people bidding on the hospital. And then another thing I worry about, it says at the end, it says, we're going to find the money will be replenished through the annual budget process, including cost allocation and plan charges to the Ventura County Medical Center Enterprise Fund. How can you take something from one area and put it into another? I didn't think you could do that. So I'm just concerned, we were, we have a structural deficit according to your own testimony a couple, about a month ago, saying, I think we were $80,000 or something in the hole. Now we're going to be another $6.5 million in the hole from what I could tell, but maybe I'm a layperson. I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm just concerned for the taxpayer and I think it's time that you guys up there start voting against some of this stuff or figure out a way to finance this stuff, you know, so it looks right. This does not seem fair to the taxpayer. You told us taxes on commercial paper, July and January of last year, and now we're changing the rules. So that's all I have to state.
Michael has.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of points to clarify. First of all, where the funds are going to be loaned.
Not just the fourth.
Oh, wait.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. The funds are going to be loaned from a reserve fund that was actually established with tobacco settlement dollars. So tobacco settlement from the settlement with the tobacco company, so. And it's going to be borrowed, so it'll be paid back over 15 years from the VCMC Enterprise Fund with no additional general fund dollars.
General fund dollars.
No additional general fund dollars.
So you're allowed to do that under federal law? Use taxpayer settlement money? It's totally legal?
Absolutely, for healthcare purposes. It's the precise purpose that it's set aside for.
Okay.
Exactly right. And it's actually not 6.5. That's the amount that's going to be borrowed, but the bids came back in and it's going to be closer to 4 million for tenant improvements, just to clarify.
Didn't you guys use taxpayer, didn't you use tobacco tax to pay the fine back in 1999 or 2000?
I can't remember what they used, but in any event, it's a perfectly appropriate use for this clinic process. Thank you.
It's nice to hear that it's 2 million less than what was.
It's a good market to be building in, that's for sure.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate, Mike and I had a conversation yesterday, asked that same question, what are we doing differently in that same boat? And the idea with that tax, we have that money sitting aside because that's based on, you know, what we had and it's $15 million or some number.
Yeah.
And it's making 0% in the bank, just about. So the idea is, in one sense, whatever interest rate we're going to pay on this money is going to be higher than we had, so what it's going to do is, instead of us paying some investor, we're going to pay ourselves, which helps us continue to support the healthcare system with a little bit extra money. But you're right. I mean, the idea that we shouldn't be using just general fund to pay for things like that is.
Well, I agree. That's a normal person that's not.
Because I had those written out on my thing and we had the same question we sat together. It was, understanding that how it was written out was a little bit.
And then I have one other input and I'll leave you guys alone. Why is a forfeit vote a financial item of that magnitude on the consent counter? I mean, shouldn't that be a time certain item? I mean, if it's forfeit vote, it means it's financial in nature. Why is it, I guess that's, you guys are allowed to do that, but.
Well, the reasoning, because the project itself was already approved.
Okay.
As well as financing in that same amount, just the source of it had changed.
Right, I mean, exactly. It was more of a technical change. We had agreed to do that and we're just changing how it's financed.
Okay.
And that's what it was. I agree, but otherwise, it would have been on the.
Okay.
Fair question. Thank you.
Linda followed by Lucas Thayer.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Linda Bronchreger. I'm the CEO of the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund and I'm, I'm here to share with you very exciting news. We received last week an award from the state of California Department of Housing and Community Development under the Prop 1(c) funds are matching $2 million for the start of the Housing Trust Fund. And I want to make sure, yeah, that's a big applause. I want to thank you all because really, it would not have been for your $500,000 matching grant. If you had not stepped up in the early days, we could not have raised the additional funds. As you may remember, we initially were hoping to just get to $500,000. We did eventually raise over $1 million and through negotiations with the state of California, we were able to convince them to go ahead and give us the maximum of the 200, excuse me, the $2 million match. So we will need to raise another 900 and then we will be able to launch the fund with a $4 million investment. We expect to start the revolving loan fund in the third quarter of this year, which means we'll be putting out NOFAs for developers who are building affordable housing or rehabbing affordable housing with a focus on veterans, homeless, farm workers, and transitional aged youth. So we're very excited and wanted to thank you for that. We also wanted to share with you that on June 6th, we are going to be celebrating this great launch of the Housing Trust Fund at the Tower Club with an event in the evening at 5:30, so I hope you all will join us. Thank you.
And Linda, would you just, the Housing Trust Fund is a nonprofit board.
That's the other piece, yes, thank you.
Talk about who you are and how you're made up and.
Okay, great. Home housing opportunities made easier. A number of years ago, one of the housing conferences talked about the concept of the Housing Trust Fund and could it work in Ventura County? A subcommittee was started and they researched different models and concepts and we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. It took a number of years of diligent work, constantly chaired by Dawn Dyer of the Dyer Sheehan Group. She continues to be the chair of the group today. With your $500,000, we then went to each of the cities in the county and received funding from five of the cities. So I will also mention that we are the only Housing Trust Fund in the state of California that has multi-jurisdictions as well as the county participating in their trust fund. So our model was unique, which added to the, the challenge of getting it approved. We have also raised funds from private industry, foundations, and individuals. And we will be moving forward with this loan fund, which is a match, so we'll put forward funds and then be matched by the state of California up to 2 million, again, for new construction of rental units for affordable housing or rehab of rental units. Down the road, we will be looking at single family as well.
Thank you for the good news.
It's very exciting.
If I could just say something, a thank you and thank you to Dawn and to so many people, your list of those who are the board members now on the Housing Trust Fund, tenacious, continued to do the outreach to the public, the public education side of it, the engagement with the cities in order to make this happen. And it is a tool that will be very helpful for us in the future, particularly looking at the, still the very stagnant conditions we have in housing in this county and the needs that are in front of us. So I appreciate both the passion, the tenacity, and the good work of all the board members and Rodney Fernandez and I, see, I started naming.
I know.
I was stopped with that, but it's been a good partnership work. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I just want to say that this is the start. We now take these funds and leverage them in private industry to bring tens of millions of dollars back to our county, so it's very exciting.
Yeah, it is. It is.
I'd like to also just thank you for the good work that you're doing and that partnership and then also the population that you're reaching out to, the veterans, the emancipated foster youth, the people who are homeless. I mean, that is just tremendous and particularly being able to get the support from both the private sector and the public sector and we're right behind you. You really see the tremendous benefit of the Plan to End Homelessness, the 10-year Plan to End Homelessness. We started off with that. It's a very, you know, it's a huge goal, but it is definitely the goal we need to have and I just thank you for being a lead on that.
Well, it's my pleasure. It's these times we need to be creative and this is a creative model, leveraging both sources and I think it's going to be very exciting to see it.
Thank you.
Do some, provide some housing, excuse me.
And if I, if I could, I just want to say, I really appreciate, I appreciate you contacting our office last week. It was exciting news when it came forward.
Yes.
And you and Dawn have demonstrated really good leadership on this.
Well, thank you.
Could you, could you tell me what, how many people were, how many organizations were competing? You know, we got the funding out of how many and if we hadn't stepped forward and fill in on that a little bit?
Sure. This was through Prop 1(c), which was passed in 2006 and it had, it was 48, 38 or 48 million. I apologize, I don't know the exact number, for Housing Trust Funds, divided between new trust funds and existing Housing Trust Funds. So any new organization that either was cropping up at that time or has come up since then, as it turned out, because this was such difficult financial times, very few new trust funds actually succeeded at doing this. And so I think there was three other trust funds around the state who were able to qualify under the new trust fund category, so we would be the fourth. But those trust funds were, for the most part, offshoots of a city. For example, the city of Salles and Oaks started a trust fund under the city. They received those funds, but we're the only one that, as I said, is multi-jurisdictional participating in this model, so it's exciting.
Well, that's great.
Thank you.
And, yes, as I say, we're the only one in the, in the state that's become a new trust fund, new since the passage of the bond?
Well, there were, there's one other new one, Orange County, and they, their model is, each one is a little bit different, so.
Well, what's the starting date on new? I mean, so there's.
It was, well, it changed a couple of times. I believe it was after 2008.
Uh-huh, right.
Right.
So one of the, to be considered a new trust fund, you had to have started since 2008.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, it's just, very few, very few places have been able to pull this off.
Well, and I think it was the hope of the state that more new trust, new trust funds would come about, but you bring in the economic conditions and the challenges that that brought, it was, you know, very difficult to bring this to fruition.
Again, it's just, it's a remarkable accomplishment.
Well, thank you all. It really was because you all stepped up and, and put that pledge out there that we were able to get the cities to step up as well, as well as private industry.
And we got another comment from Silver.
The June 6th event at the Tower Club is a reception, 5:30, 7:30.
Correct.
And what you're looking for there is to bring more folks interested in being partners with the trust fund, both those banks or others who wish to put money into the pool, but also for the public education side of it.
Absolutely.
To engage advocates and bring support to it. So they're looking for, again, an opportunity for the board members to, to participate and it's the day after the election, so you can come and party.
Right on.
Thanks, Linda.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you for the good work.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, Lucas Thayer, followed by Theodora Devitt Cornyn.
That lady's great. That lady does some great work. I wish that, that the great work that you do didn't need to be done because the, if the corporate taxes were raised, then.
Lucas, address the board.
Address the board. If the corporate taxes were raised, then the great work that she does wouldn't need to be done because those services are definitely human rights. I also appreciate Linda Parks calling homeless people, people who are homeless. I find that to be significantly less offensive than the homeless because calling them the homeless is like saying the blacks or the Mexicans or the retards. That's not good and the way you put it is good. Thank you. On May 1st, there will be a global general strike and boycott. There is a call to do no work and no banking and not go to school and take to the streets and demand that all human rights be respected equally for all humans, including people who are homeless. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights, according to the United Nations General Assembly in 1948, is still blatantly disrespected every day. Human rights are stomped all over in this country and in this county. The 30 human rights, according to the United Nations, are the right to equality, the right to freedom from discrimination, right to life, liberty, and personal security, freedom from slavery, freedom from torture and degrading treatment, right to recognition as a person before the law, right to equality before the law, right to remedy by competent tribunal, freedom from arbitrary arrest and exile, right to fair public hearing, right to be considered innocent until proven guilty, freedom from interference with privacy, family, home, and correspondence, right to free movement in and out of the country, right to asylum in other countries from persecution, right to nationality and the freedom to change nationality, right to marriage and family, the right to own property, freedom of belief and religion, freedom of opinion and information, right to peaceful assembly and association, right to participate in government and in free elections, not $700 elections, right to social to participate in government and in free elections, not $700 elections, right to social security, right to desirable work and to join trade unions, right to rest and leisure, right to adequate living standard, right to education, right to participate in the cultural life of community, right to a social order that articulates this document, community duties essential to free and full development, freedom from state or personal interference in the above rights. These are human rights that were demanded by the United Nations in 1948. I'd like this county to pass a resolution listing human rights that will be respected by this county, and I'd like that list to be very similar to this list that was passed by the United Nations. The United Nations had something going for them. They were right. All of these are human rights, please respect human rights. On May 1st, 2012, there will be a Four Winds Convergence upon downtown Los Angeles, and Ventura will be a part of the Four Winds Convergence, will be starting at 8 o'clock in the morning, right here outside this building, and then coming on in to demand that human rights be respected and whatever other demands people might have. So I encourage anyone to come on down and continue demanding that human rights be respected. Steve Bennett, this Universal Declaration of Human Rights is for you.
Thank you.
And please study it and respect it. And in June, June, no, July, let's go July. In July, on, July 17th, there will be something called the Bohemian Grove up in Northern California in Sonoma County, where the elitists of this country meet and have these secret lakeside talks. Corporate leaders and politicians and officials and congressmen will all be together behind the scenes, off the cameras, discussing the wheelings and dealings of the corrupt government that we have. I'd like to expose the Bohemian Grove for the secret 1% meeting that it is and encourage all to come and attend that meeting as well, not inside because it's a paid-for event, but on the outside, we'll be there. Expect us. Thank you. May 1st, general strike.
Thank you, Lucas. Theodora?
I'm Theodora Davit-Cornyn, and I am the proud owner of some of, more of those Universal Declarations of Human Rights. If anyone else would like some, I can offer them. That's my, from my religious tradition, that copy is made available.
Thank you.
It's Unitarian Universalist Service Committee that produces them. I just want to say thank you to our wonderful Board of Supervisors because I'm really encouraged by what I'm hearing this morning, because we have good news coming from several sources, from Ormond Beach and from our Housing Fund, and I would like to add my compliments to the fact that I think I've been hearing that our Board of Supervisors is interested in continuing the conversation about home foreclosures and looking into our county recorder's office and process about how our documents are being processed for, before home foreclosures or, God forbid, before any evictions would occur. So I just wanted to say that I'm here on behalf of not only myself, but I do community ministry, as some of you know, in Oxnard, and I also do work with Occupy Oxnard. We do not sleep in Plaza Park. I made that a ground rule, and we believe in complete transparency and nonviolence. So it's a group of people very similar to me, and we're just hoping to improve getting attention to issues which are not necessarily being attended to well enough until now. So I wanted to just say that on one of our recent Occupy Oxnard's visits here, Supervisor Foy had asked if it's true about the average foreclosed family being 22 months behind in payments. What we've heard is that many families are being foreclosed upon without even being behind in their payments on the basis of disputed fees alone, that homes are being sold at county options right here outside of the county recorder's office, in the courtyard on that side of the building. And I've attended some of those, and it's pretty startling to hear how quickly these things happen once the paperwork is stamped, approved. It's a concern that homes are being sold at county option by parties that never even held title. So I'm asking this board to find out if, actually, is that true? And if it is true, what can we do about it? And Supervisor Foy also asked if it's true that banks are actually losing money when they foreclose on people. Why would banks be doing the foreclosures at all if they were losing money at it? What I've heard is that the investors are losing their shirts. It's our shirts, really, because it's our retirement savings, and I've seen my own retirement savings shrink terribly in the last couple of years, and that pension plans are going under. I have a friend who was working at Countywide, and they heard that Countywide feels that they hold all the strings, or at least they did at that time. They control the appraisal, they control how title is held. The borrower asks for a mortgage and gets a deed of trust, which offers far fewer rights than a mortgage. How about homeowners at home here or in the audience? We wonder if you ever went shopping for a mortgage and ended up with a deed of trust? Did anyone ever offer a home buyer a choice? And does anyone know of a place where you can get a real estate loan and know who will actually be holding it the next year and the year after that? I think most of the people in this room know because it'll be one beast with many heads. It's MERS. They're making the server of choice, servicer of choice, and they are among those who are making out like bandits. But I know you don't have to take our word for it, you'll be doing your own investigation. And I invite our board to communicate with me or any member of the group that's spoken here, to invite us into your offices, and we would be happy to have a conversation with you about how we could work on this going forward together.
Thank you so much for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is our board comments. Supervisor Foy.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn the members of people on this list. Also, say that I attended the Southern California Leadership Council last week, and it was interesting listening to our supervisors from the Southern California counties who are struggling with realignment and all the other issues that are coming down our way from the state and the economics that they deal with. When you listen to some of those things coming out of LA and Riverside and San Bernardino, we, we've heard from this diocese before that we're better than most, and it's true. It is nice to be able to be in better shape, not that we are not going to have to pay our bills down the line, it's just we're not paying them right now like some of the other ones are, and it's difficult. The thing with realignment is really interesting, is people go, we go from managing jails to managing prisons. You know, when you talk about long-term, it's going to be a big, big difference for us in the cost and what it's going to do economically and what it's going to do to a very safe community. And hopefully we have the fortitude to keep moving our resources to help public safety, to continue the community that we have, because some of those supervisors we're talking about, they've already seen an increase in crime, that what's happened already, it's only been a few months. So it's been interesting to listen to some of that. Also, on some of the, we had three governors there who were talking, and it's interesting when a governor will tell you that some of the issues and where they went didn't work out quite like they hoped. And it was, it was interesting to see that everybody from both sides of the different parties were there saying, you know, this has gotten to a point, we need to get some solutions, need to get them quick. It's very difficult for California right now, and it's not going to get much better. So I thought it was, it was an interesting meeting, so I enjoyed it. My comments for the day, thanks.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you and good morning. I have a list to submit to, adjourn in memory, and just wanted to comment quickly on the senior summit that took place on Saturday at the university, sponsored by the healthcare agency. Had a very good turnout, and I heard lots of good comments from folks who participated both in the workshops and throughout the day. The workshops, I think, were valuable for people, they were all full. I heard feedback specifically about, not only did people learn from the presenters, but they learned from one another as there was sharing going on and questions asked and questions answered and people speaking up and saying, well, my experience was such, such, and such. Dr. Gonzalez did a fantastic job, Dr. Lambing, our speakers, the panel, were all excellent. Dr. Gonzalez was quite excited about it, you know, thinking we need to, we need to do this every year. And I said, okay, let's talk about that. It's Supervisor Parks, your staff did a great job leading this. I was happy we were, I was able to lend some staff support to it also. The volunteers that came in from the YMCA, Canoe Youth Group and their yellow T-shirts were great to have, working the summit and with, making sure folks knew where to go and where support was lended to them. So, it was, it was a very good morning, and through the lunch period, I was able to stay that long. I had a packed day that day in that I also attended and was the emcee for the Dining with the Dogs, the second annual at the Camarillo Ranch House. And the only reason I will mention this is because, that's right, it supports the Ventura County Sheriff's K-9 Unit, the Sheriff's K-9 Search and Rescue Dogs, the National Police Dog Foundation. They had, must have been 300 people, which was really good to see, and they, and people were there enjoying both the demonstrations with the canines and the engagement with the officers, and the auction went well, so it was, for the second annual, I think they were very pleased with the turnout on it. I'd like to certainly, also another one to call out in advance, the Military and Community, the Military Business and Community Expo that's sponsored by VACIDA along with RDP21 is May 8th, and it's at the Ventura County Office of Education Conference Center in Camarillo. It is one of very good public-private partnership conference event, gets a good turnout. The intent and focus is to have the business community know how they can do business with our naval-based Ventura County, and to be able to come and talk to the different tracks and available business opportunities and to learn about the naval-based Ventura County as that economic engine in our county. And also, I'll provide to you a reminder that, again, on May 2nd is the kickoff of the Watershed Awareness Month, and it's the Santa Clara River Watershed Awareness Month, Watershed Awareness Month activities. May 2nd is a, at the Faulkner Farm, there'll be speakers and talking about the state of our watershed, and then the following two weekends will be actual nature walks and talks with the Nature Conservancy and the Santa Paula Guided Tour of the Ag Museum in Santa Paula, and that takes place on Saturday, May 12th, and on Saturday, May 19th. Boke Creek Restoration Project, which is in northern, the northern part of LA County, the Santa Clarita community, Central Park, Santa Clarita Recycled Water System, Laverne Nursery, and Piru. These are, both of these tours and walks are open to the public, as is the kickoff event on May 2nd. It's an opportunity to learn about the, this wonderful resource we have in the watershed, to learn ways we're working to both protect and enhance it and to invite the public to join us and be aware of the good work that's going on. I know we all have watershed, there's the Ventura River Watershed Council, and there's the Cuyahoga's Creek Watershed. We're fortunate in this county, we have three significant watersheds, and they're, and they have groups like this who are embracing the values of the resource and looking at ways to, again, protect and enhance the watershed. So this watershed day will be an opportunity to do that. And the last thing is to congratulate Mr. Powers and the team of Chris Stevens, Kim Pearlheart, Rosemary Rowan, who appealed our Rowena members with SCAG, and successfully were able to get them knocked down a little bit for our unincorporated area, but every little bit helps. I know that as a region, we still have significant challenges to engage both the public and the elected leadership on the, the work that is directing our, continuing to direct our growth into the cities and looking at accommodating the housing needs by going up a little bit instead of out, and the value of having these numbers, as painful as they may be, is that that has to be the continued message and work that we do, so.
Michael.
Thank you for the good work on that.
Thank you, Supervisor. And Supervisor Bennett.
I do just want to really recognize the RMA team, who really put it all together, so thank you very much.
Supervisor Bennett, that will go.
Thank you. I'd just like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and there's just one person I'd call out, and that's Caroline Becker, American Great Cost volunteer for 50 years. Most of us have seen her around for a long time.
Oh, wow.
She helped victims in disaster after disaster, including 9/11 in New York, hurricanes in Florida, and she's a friend and former colleague of Lauren Bianchi and Supervisor Long's office also. So I asked the board to adjourn in memory of people on this list, and I enjoyed both the Earth Day celebration in, at Oak Grove School up in the Ojai Valley on Saturday, the only Earth Day celebration in the Ojai Valley, put on by four organizations, Food for Thought, Oak Grove School, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. And then on Sunday was the Youth Fest, where there was a leadership award presented, the first annual in the Ojai Valley in Libby Park. And then later that day, they had a fundraiser for Chimp Haven, and it was the exact same weekend as Disney's rollout of Chimpanzee, the film, and it was the first time that Disney's ever allowed a fundraising event like that on the opening weekend of the film that they have going out. This is pretty remarkable, and a lot of, a lot of people from the Disney organization and from Chimp Haven around the, around the country were there at the event, so I wanted to pass those, those significant events in District 1 this past weekend. Thank you, and excuse me.
Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. I guess being on the campaign trail, I get to go out to a lot more places now, and one, I got to enjoy a couple of days in Ojai at Libby Park and Oak Grove Park, too. What an incredible benefit for those kids in this beautiful park. They've got a school right in the middle of it, and it was just really nice to see. But great Earth Day events, and Ojai's kind of the center of Earth Day events here in our county last weekend. Also, my staff also attended the SCAG hearing, got them all down to LA and made a good impact of, I think, 41 appeals were made and only two were granted, and we were one of the two. So I'm happy that they did, even though the appeal ended up not doing as much as we had hoped. We're still seeing more than we anticipated, and I think we still need to look to see whether we want to challenge that to the next step, and I think that is worth considering. And the letter I submitted, which I shared with your offices, just points to the fact that it, you know, we have a, you know, guidelines for orderly development here that says you build in the cities, not in the unincorporated county, and when the cities are all getting less than they had received last year and the county is getting more, that is a big concern. But we also have an opportunity to work with our cities to look how we can share within the county, and that worked out really well last time, so we'll have less to fight over when we do get together, and hopefully that will come out to benefit all and keep, you know, protections of our green belts in our county, which is something the residents have strongly valued and express that through SOAR and our green belts guidelines, so. Also, was able to attend a wonderful event which Supervisor Long pointed to, the Senior Summit, and the part that I participated in was with the senior citizens, but we also had this whole other workshop going on for our healthcare professionals, and at the mental health board yesterday found that several of those members were there. I didn't even know that they were at the conference, but they really liked the dialogue information they got about palliative care particularly that we have here at the county. It was great, and I like, the Star had an article that ended with a woman, Camille Torgeson, saying, "I think there is hope no matter what your situation." That's what she got from it, and that someone can come out and help the family and the seniors. There was a lot of information, very valuable, and we'll hope to get a report back to the board on that, too, in the coming weeks. Also, in Oak Park, we are graduating a second set of teenagers to the CERT program, the Community Emergency Response Training. From Oak Park High, they graduated 22 students last year, and they've got another batch coming, and it's such a great idea for, to do this in the high schools, and we'll be going to, I guess Simi Valley High is now looking at do it next, but if I can just take a moment to read a group... But if I can just take a moment to read a group of Oak Park teenagers, who's now ready to help if disasters should strike their neighborhood. This is the second Oak Park class to complete the teen CERT curriculum that consists of disaster preparedness, fire safety and suppression, emergency medical operations, basic search and rescue, CERT operations, disaster psychology and terrorism. Oak Park also held the first one in 2011. The course was offered as part of Brenda Pasca's Sports Medicine III class, consisted of 95 minutes of instruction every other day from February through April 30th, and two fire captains, two retired fire captains from Ventura County, Gary DeSognes, and from the Ventura County Fire Department, oh, and Don Lee was actually from the Los Angeles Fire Department, and they worked with the class and taught the instructions. So, I just think that's so valuable, what a great thing to be able to learn, and they're kind of a captive audience when you're at high school.
Yeah.
And with that, I would also just ask that we close in honor of a, a couple of people on my list. One is Marshall Dixon, whose son, well, son-in-law is Mario Diaz, and his daughter, Don Dixon Diaz, is a very strong members of the community of Thousand Oaks, and I know that they will very much miss him. And then also like to point to a nice lady, Evelyn Lane, and she was an RN at Los Robles Hospital until her retirement, and then she was a volunteer for the Goble Senior Center. So, these and the other people on my list, I would ask that we close in, in honor of them. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. I'd also like to share that we had a very busy week last weekend, we had the Earth Day cleaned up over at McGrath Park, and I want to thank the gas company, because they have, we had over 100-plus people cleaning up, painting and replanning, getting the McGrath Park ready for opening day. We were almost completed with the, with the sewer pipeline, and I just want to thank City Core and also the Oxnard Boys and Girls Club, Ranger S. Jolly Oyster from the state, you know, he was here, and the Friends of the Coast Park System. And also, I'm very happy to share that Southern Gas Company donated $2,000 to City Core, and also $3,000 to the Friends of the, of the Channel Islands Coast for their assistance. And also want to thank Nancy, that was here today with us, for the opening of the Gene Roma Porridge Trail. And the two young ladies that did the work were from Ojai and Ventura, so I want to thank them for that. And Supervisor Long, and also the, pardon, excuse me, and the Health Agency for the good job that you did with the Senior Summit over in, in Camarillo. Thank you for that. And also attended the Oxnard Police Officer of the Year in, in Oxnard. I'm losing my voice, I want to apologize, but we had a very fruitful week. And also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of those folks. Thank you.
Okay. And the next item is, 34?
Good morning, Board Members, Chairman, Mr. Powers. My name is Talia Barrera with the Workforce Investment Board. Item 34 is a recommendation to appoint four new members to the Workforce Investment Board, and reappoint seven new members, seven current members in good standing to a new two-year term. The new members are Carla Castillo with SCIU Local 721, Kimberly Nielsen with Solid Waste Solutions in Thousand Oaks, Tavi Udray with House Automation in Oxnard, and Sandra Werner with Simi Valley Hospital. Our current members are Victor Dollar, Martha Fraser, Bernardo Perez, Hugh Alston, Tony Skinner, Alex Teague, and Barry Zimmerman. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, so the motion, the second. And let's approve, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 35, it's Supervisor Bennett.
There we go. Thank you very much. I asked if we could have this, if we could do this at 9:45.
9:45, okay.
That's when we have vindicated the people, we'd like to have this item heard, I appreciate it.
Okay, and let's go to item 36. Jeff?
Anybody else coming?
As I look for Paul Dershowitz. Good morning Chair, Supervisors, Mr. Powers, for the Recommended, Jeff Burke, CEO's office. Today's item is pretty perfunctory, we do this every year, we're getting ready to go out for our tax revenue anticipation notes, our trans, and this is authorizing a trans amount of $160,000, and then the ancillary contracts that go along with that issuance.
$160,000?
$160 million, I am very sorry. There is a big difference there, and I am very sorry. And I can entertain any questions you may have at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that. The Finance Committee did approve that too.
And this has been approved by Financial, yes, yes, Planning Committee, yes.
Thank you Jeff, and item 37.
Again, good morning Chairs Aragosa, Board Members, Mr. Powers, for the Recommended, Jeff Burke, with the County CEO's office. The item today is to appoint two additional members of the public to the various oversight boards, as identified in the board letter. We are filling the final slots for the Oversight Board to the City of Ventura's former redevelopment agency, and the Oversight Board for the City of Oxnard redevelopment agency. Again, those are for the members of the public appointments, and I can entertain any questions you may have.
We got a motion, the second.
I would ask that we be advised when those meetings occur, you know, if there's, wherever they're posted, it'd be nice to know, and we can let our constituents know, because it is, they are public meetings, the public can attend and see how the redevelopment agencies are going to, or the old redevelopment agencies will end up being, having their assets dispersed.
Okay.
Is there a meeting in Oxnard tomorrow?
There is a meeting tomorrow, Oxnard, at 11:00 AM. I will be there.
At the council chambers, just for information.
Yes.
If we could, in fact, agree, maybe even post them on our website or something.
Give back, that's.
Because I, I would imagine it, you know, it's something that is really important to the citizens, and there was a lot of hearings and a lot of people that came to the meetings that established all of this, but I would imagine the public will not be participating much in these because, you know, may not know about them. Thank you.
Thank you Jeff. Mr. Powers?
Well, I was just saying, maybe it's something we need to consider in terms of setting the time for the meetings too, going forward, in terms of public access to them.
Certainly, if they were in the evening, people could go who work during the day.
Correct.
And thank you for the good work.
I heard about some of your meetings already, pretty interesting, huh?
Pretty, they are in fact, pretty interesting, yes.
Okay, item, thank you Jeff.
Thank you.
Item 38, Supervisor Bennett.
We're, I'd like to appoint Joe Westfield to fill the remaining term on the Ojai Valley MAC. We advertised for this position, and people applied to the MAC, and the MAC is recommending that it be Joe Westbury. And also, while I haven't, we don't have to wait, there aren't other speakers coming for the item 35, so we'll be able to go to that right after this.
So, 38, you make a motion?
Anyway, I'd like to move the appointment of Joe Westbury.
Okay, we got a motion, the second. And we are going to take a 10-minute, is it ready now?
Yes, that's what I was saying, okay. I'd like to recommend, and we gave you the revised board letter, that the board adopt a position in support of AB 1938. I know we have a speaker here, Craig Hall, who represents many of the mobile home residents in the city of Ventura, and also works closely with GS MOL, and we talked with Sue Hughes, and she felt that this item was specific enough that we needed to bring it to the board to have a position, a position on it.
So, Craig?
Go ahead.
Do we have an extra copy of the change? I don't get it.
It was, there was any, I got it in the computer.
Hi, my name is Craig Hall, and I'm President of the Ventura Mobile Home Residents Council. I'm also Vice President of Zone B1 for GS MOL, and that includes Ventura, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Benito Counties. I am in support of this bill, because one of the things that park owners don't do is they're supposed to come out and give three options to their residents. They're supposed to give either a month-to-month, one year, or at the option of the resident, then they go into a 10, 15, 20, 30-year lease. Well, these leases are like anywhere from 12, 13, up to, I've seen them as, as long as 50 pages, and the, the seniors have a hard time in understanding these leases, and so, one of the things this bill will do is to have a page on the top that would consolidate all these charges and make sure that they understand what they're paying for in their lease, and this is something that really needs to be done, especially for seniors in mobile home parks. The other thing in the bill is the rescission rights thing, where once they're given the lease right now, they have 72 hours. Well, the thing that should be done is they should have the right to, once they sign the lease, to have the 72-hour rescission. So, this is some clarifications of the lease, and it's something that I think is major and should happen in the state legislature. So, I thank you for the board considering this.
Well, I thank you Craig for coming down today, but also just for your leadership in terms of, there's a, it's a special group of people that reside in our mobile home parks, and they, you have important issues in terms of providing affordable housing to lots of people here in Ventura County. So, just thanks for all your work to help look out for those people, we really appreciate it. And with that, I'd like to, the.
Supervisor, you said there was a revision?
Yes, there was a revision. It was sent to everybody's office, it was supposed to be sent to everybody's office just afternoon, the revision took place.
The mandatory section was crossed out, I think.
But it, alls it did was, alls it did was, was take out, I'll read it to you if you'd like, it says, "This bill, this is what's out of the bill now. This bill would also provide in any agreement that purports to deny a homeowner's right to a trial by jury or mandate," and this was the significant, "mandate binding arbitration of any dispute between the management and the homeowner must be set forth in a written agreement as specified by, and mutually agreed to by the homeowner or management." In other words, they were saying that there couldn't be a binding arbitration clause that was required by management in the legislation, and they took that out of the legislation, and it was the one issue that we raised questions about. That, yeah, so that's no longer a part of the bill. So, a contract could say disputes will be resolved by, by binding arbitration. That's the, that's the one change, I just wanted to make sure.
But it doesn't mandate it?
It does not, it doesn't mandate binding arbitration. What this did was, originally it was saying that, that it couldn't be put in there as a requirement, right?
And thank you, Mr. Hall, too, for, for your testimony.
It allows.
It allows for binding arbitration, but it does not prohibit, does not prohibit management from having that as part of the contract. So, some contracts had binding arbitration as part of it, and some people were saying, and there was, there was, obviously there was a concern raised about that, and so, Assembly Member Williams struck that from the bill altogether.
Okay. So, is that a motion?
So, I'll move the recommended action.
Okay, that's approved, four to one, and did we do it, 38 now?
Yes, we did.
Okay, okay. So, now the 10 o'clock item is, we got about, what, 19 minutes? No closed session today? No, no closed session today? No, right? No.
Okay, we should have a break.
So, Rachel, 10 o'clock, we'll be back at 10 o'clock for the time, 10 o'clock time We're going to resume our meeting, and we have item number 22, Mr. Bennett, Supervisor
Thank you very much Supervisor Aragosa, and I'd like to ask Howard Asher to come forward, along with Steve Lisbon, and Howard, if you have any relatives in the audience with you, you can bring them, bring them down with you, right? And this is your wife?
This is my wife, Jan Alfred.
This is also in your office.
Oh, is that right? Great.
That's right.
Well, this is a happy day for Howard, his wife and family, I'm sure, in terms of where he is in his career. It may not be that happy of day for Steve to lose such a talented person from the public defender's office, but this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors honoring Howard Asher upon his retirement from the County of Ventura Public Defender's Office. And whereas Howard Asher became an attorney with the Ventura County Public Defender's Office in June 1982, prior to his career as a defense attorney, Howard was an elementary school teacher for five years, and an instructional leader at Bedford Open School for two years. Howard obtained a Bachelor's of Arts degree in history from the University of California Santa Barbara in 1971, a state teaching credential from the University of California Santa Barbara in '75, and a Juris Doctorate Degree from Southern California Institute of Law, Ventura College of Law in 1982. During Howard's career with the Ventura County Public Defender, he quickly advanced through the ranks, becoming the misdemeanor supervisor in 1990, and in 2003, senior attorney in 1992, chief deputy public defender in 2005, and assistant public defender in 2010. Howard is, is or has been a member of the Ventura County Bar Association, Ventura County Criminal Defense Bar Association, the California Public Defenders Association. He was the president of the Ventura Criminal Defense Bar Association from 1995, 1996, was the recipient of the Joyce Yoskioka, I believe I got it. Say that again?
Yoshioka.
Yoshioka, thank you, award for outstanding contribution to the criminal justice system in 1995, and was the winner of the Attorney Criminal 5K Run in 1994, 1995, 1997, 1998, which is why he looks so, so healthy right now, and has successfully ran in and completed six marathons, including three times in the Los Angeles Marathon. Howard has earned the respect of his colleagues, peers, and members of the criminal justice system, including the Superior Court Bench. His entire legal career has been devoted to representing indigent clients, defending clients in every aspect of criminal defense work, including misdemeanor, juvenile, felony, and special circumstances, and capital case litigation. Howard will now have more time to devote to his loving wife, five grandsons, and two granddaughters, his love of softball, fishing, and camping, and new hobbies yet to be discovered. So, now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Howard Asher upon his retirement for the Ventura County Public Defender's Office after 30 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Ventura County. So, we really want to congratulate you, and your, your long commitment to indigent people and to make sure that, that their rights are respected as they're moving through our process. And it's one of the things that I think really marks the civilization of our society, is our commitment to saying that indigent people need to have adequate and good representation in the courtrooms, and so, that's a lifelong commitment and something you can really be proud of. And Steve, I'd like to see if you have any comments you'd like to make? And Steve, I'd like to see if you have any comments you'd like to make before we turn it over to Howard for a quick comment.
Yeah, I was actually going to turn it over to Howard, but I'll just briefly say what you said facetiously is completely true. It's a very happy day for Howard, Jan, and their family, and the public defender's office a little bittersweet. We're really happy Howard's getting a chance to retire. He's still very healthy. I don't think he can run marathons anymore, but he still can run. But it's going to be very difficult to replace his sense, his respect among the courthouse. You can't find a person in the assistant who's got a greater amount of respect from district attorneys, from judges, from sheriffs, everyone. Howard is the gold standard, and it's going to be very difficult for us to replace him. But despite that, we're very happy that he's got three more days, and then he's on to turn.
Okay. So, Howard, would you like to address us?
Well, I want to thank you, Steve, and all the members of the board for this resolution. I appreciate the honor. It's, I don't really feel like I have earned anything special, because what I've been doing is a job that I dearly love for the last 30 years. And I really never thought I'd like anything better than teaching elementary kids, but I've kind of fallen into a niche in the office, most of which was spent as a trial lawyer, and I've never regretted a day of it. And I especially want to thank all the members of the board for supporting our office, you know, which is over 40 years old, and it's a vibrant office. It's one of the best public defender offices in the state of California. And part of the reason for that is you guys have philosophically and financially supported us and kept us to be a vibrant member of the criminal justice system and helped us, you know, properly protect constitutional rights of all of our indigent clients. For that, you'll always have my enduring thank you and respect. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Michael wants to share a couple of words. Supervisor Bennett? Go ahead, Michael.
While they're snapping photos, I would just say that the public defender's office does have a wonderful reputation up and down the state, and Howard is a big reason for that. So, thanks for his great service. Thank you.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. And Howard, congratulations. Enjoy your retirement. That's okay, I'm sure he can hear me. He could hear elementary kids. And if you can do, if you can do that job, you can do anything. And thank you. And the office is very much respected, and because of people like you and your good work and excellent training, obviously, in elementary school. But thank you. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, Howard.
You're very welcome.
It is a true public service.
It is such a noble profession, and I thank you very much for giving your service to people who really needed it in Ventura County. And your wife, I guess, gets to continue to stay on, huh?
Yes, she is my meal ticket.
Health insurance.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is, and I'm going to have Lourdes help me out, supporting safe and secure prescription drug disposal.
Good morning, Supervisor.
Let me, I'm sorry, Lourdes, let me call Dr. Nguyen, show Nguyen up to the, is he here?
That's the next one.
Next item, I'm sorry. Okay.
Actually, if you'd like to call somebody up, it's Dr. Armin and Marcy, I'm not sure if I'm going to say it right, Mofid?
Mofid?
From the ENT clinic.
And I want to apologize, yes, I have the names mixed up. Go ahead. Much better looking, go ahead.
Thank you, Supervisor. Good morning.
The safe one.
For the head and neck cancer.
Okay, they told me last night. So, who's taking that one? Is it Melanie Roy?
Because we're for the head and neck cancer.
Okay, so, no, it's for something else. So, it's the next item, item number 24.
24.
So, I'm going to be by myself up here.
I'm at 23. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Supervisor. Good morning, Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors of Ventura County supports safe and secure prescription drug disposal, Drug Take Back Day. Whereas abuse of prescription medications is a growing public health concern that puts young lives at risk, and over half of the people using prescription drugs non-medically obtain them from a friend or relative for free. And whereas drugs advertising on TV, magazine, and social media is pervasive, and many young people mistakenly think that it is safer, it is safer to misuse prescription medication than illegal street drugs. And whereas parents often are unaware that young people are abusing...
Doing good, Lourdes, doing good.
I'm going to skip that word from now on. And over-the-counter medications. An estimated 30% and 80% of patients do not finish commonly prescribed medications, including powerful painkillers. And whereas these medications have illegitimate medical use when used properly, but misuse leads to accidental poisoning, overdose, addiction, and even death. And whereas the California Department of Alcohol and Drug Programs calls for appropriate securing of and safe disposal of unused medicines at safe, secure, and convenient disposal sites located in many cities across Ventura County, and whereas Saturday, April 28, 2012, is declared as National Prescription Drug Take Back Day to safely collect unused and unwanted medications. And whereas the local Take Back Day events of 2011 were a tremendous success to increase public safety, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors supports and encourages safe, secure, and environmentally sound disposal of unused and expired medication, making Every Day Drug Take Back Day presented this 24th day. No, it's going to be Melanie Roy coming up.
Good morning, Chairman of the Board, Supervisor Zaragoza, members of the board, and Mr. Powers, Melanie Roy, on behalf of the Behavioral Health Department. On behalf of the department, I would like to thank you for your support of our Drug Take Back Resolution. For the past four years, we've made diversion and abuse of prescription drugs a prevention priority. One in five teens in Ventura County has abused prescription drugs, and one in three teens knows someone who has. The growing legitimate use of prescription drugs creates the potential for diversion, accidental overdose, and misuse. Within the last 10 years, prescription and over-the-counter drugs are now frequently misused, as often as marijuana, which, of course, is second only to alcohol. And of course, 50% of teens who abuse prescription drugs are getting them right now from medicine cabinets in their homes. Due to our efforts locally, and I want to thank our local law enforcement partners, the sheriff and local police departments, we've collected and safely disposed of 4,000 pounds of unused pills. We want to make Every Day in Ventura County Prescription Drug Take Back Day. This is so important. It's really reached epidemic proportions, the misuse of prescription drugs. We have safe disposal units in Camarillo, in east, on Olson Road in Thousand Oaks, and Fillmore in Ventura, on Victoria Avenue, Moore Park in Ojai, we have one in Simi. And we are working very diligently with partners to increase access to those bins, and it's incredibly important. We also have a community forum that's occurring tomorrow night in the Cano Valley at the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza. And to help educate the community, what's occurring is people are getting these drugs from medicine cabinets, and in the case of opiates, becoming addicted to opiates from the medicine cabinet and then going on to heroin. And it's a tragedy, and I think unfortunately, many of us have known people whose lives have been tragically changed because of drug abuse. So, I would ask all of us to make sure that we promote the use of these disposal bins, and as the department, we will continue to work to make them more accessible and in more locations. Thank you.
One of the things that I think I saw at 60 Minutes for CNN the other day, that the seniors leave their medications, and the grandkids go over to their house, so they have to be aware that those medications should be put away so they don't get a hold of them. So, that's a big, big problem, too. So, I want to thank you, Melanie. I called you Dr. Wood.
That's all right.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Will you take a photo? Do you take a photo?
Could I ask what we can do to further the accessibility of these bins?
Well, we've, the law is currently, or actually, the laws have loosened up a little bit. Right now, the disposal bins need to be under the jurisdiction of law enforcement. And as we go forward, the hope is that we're going to be able to increase the accessibility. I mean, it would be really wonderful if we had something as accessible as, you know, people could go to a pharmacy or something, or those kind of locations.
I think there was some legislation at one time that said that you could have them at pharmacies, but I guess it didn't pass. And I'm just wondering, why is there an impediment to that? Do we know? I just, it seems like such a reasonable thing to have.
Well, right now, the purview for the disposal bins is, you know, the jurisdiction falls to the DEA, and their request is that these units, because they may involve people bringing back illicit drugs, be under the sole control of law enforcement. So, that's sort of created a situation where the disposal bins end up in law enforcement stations. But we have an interagency work group that's looking at this, watching the legislation as it goes forward, and we're hopeful that next year we'll see some loosening that will allow us to do something like locate them at a pharmacy, or a fire department, or somewhere like that.
Or do a collection.
Well, let us know if we can support that bill with a letter from the Board of Supervisors.
Great, thank you.
Do we also have a speaker card when you're done here? Dr. Deemer?
Let's go ahead and do it, and we'll get this.
It's a prescription.
The day of recognition here is very important, but the Prevention Services Department for Alcohol and Drug and Behavioral Health is really the right team to deliver that message because of the innovative systems and programs you have in place, both in terms of written work, interactive, internet, television, and radio. It's really extraordinary what you do. So, thank you.
We do have a speaker for this, Dr. Robert Deemer?
Good morning, Mr. Powers, Supervisors. My name is Robert Deemer. I'm a, excuse me, a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm 30 years a pharmacist in this community, and I represent Supervisor Parks District on the Alcohol Drug Advisory Board. And I would like to acknowledge the important remarks from our colleagues, from the board in the Behavioral Health Department. I think their message is critical. I'd like to thank the board for their support of this resolution. As a pharmacist, I've sort of unfortunately been front and center on the growing epidemic of prescription drug abuse. And in fact, it is the Food and Drug Administration, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, and the White House Office of National Drug Policy Control that acknowledges and identifies prescription drug abuse as a national epidemic. As an example of that, there, prescription drug overdose is now the leading cause of accidental death in the United States, surpassing car accidents, firearms fatalities, and represents in the terms of many, one of the most dangerous aspects of American society. The primary component of this overdose epidemic is represented by prescription drugs, specifically the potent opioids. These opioids include drugs I think you're familiar with, Oxycontin, a related product, Opana, methadone, and fentanyl products. Local law enforcement, and I've been happy to work with some local law enforcement people, Sergeant Tim Turner of Ventura Police Department, and his experience on the streets on narcotics has clearly identified what has been identified nationally, that these sorts of drugs, Oxycontin, Opana, is truly the gateway drug to heroin abuse. And as was, I think, very aptly described by our Behavioral Health colleagues, the source of these products are not cornered street drug traders. They are indeed, and in the case of Oxycontin, 70% of Oxycontin that enters our community, the source of those are indeed our home medicine cabinets, those of our parents, our grandparents, and even our friends. The connection with heroin, of course, has been well described. There has been local tragedies related to heroin overdoses in our communities, from Simi Valley to Ventura. And the common denominator in those tragedies has been that prior to the overdose deaths, they were invariably addicted, had become addicted to opioids through Oxycontin abuse. Oxycontin is now synonymous with terms like hillbilly heroin. In Appalachia, there has been a tremendous epidemic of opioid deaths associated with Oxycontin, and the source of that has been the pill mills of South Florida. And there was an award-winning documentary some years ago called The Oxycontin Express. And if you view that, and it's available on YouTube, it really provides all the information you know about the nature of this epidemic. Basically, as a pharmacist, what I'm concerned is, is once that medication is prescribed, are patients aware of how to properly secure and store that medication? And once the medication is unneeded, expired, it's how to properly dispose. And our now fourth National Take Back Day is, as was indicated, this Saturday at several sites throughout the county. And nationally, over 500 tons of products have been collected through these Take Back Days. More immediately, and perhaps more conveniently and timely than waiting for biannual Take Back Days, is adhering and heeding the advice and the recommendations of the Food and Drug Administration. And they have put out several information flyers, such as this one, How To Dispose Of Unused Medications. And as illustrated here, one of the primary routes is to take the medications, enter them, place them in some plastic containers, adulterate it in some fashion with kitty litter, charcoal, some other product, and dispose of them in the curbside garbage. And that will serve the needs of 99.9% of prescription drugs.
Is that a specialty for that curbside collection?
No, this is just in the household garbage. It's just, not the exception, and the important caveat to that is these potent opioids that I described, Oxycontin, Opana, methadone, fentanyl products. The FDA, working in collaboration with environmental scientists in their own department and in the EPA, has recommended that the most safe and efficient disposal of these dangerous drugs is by flushing down the toilet. The FDA, just this week, issued an advisory regarding fentanyl patches. Perhaps you're familiar with those. These are very, fentanyl is a very potent analgesic, and for terminal cancer pain, they're very important. They can be applied topically, and they last three days. And when they are done, they're to be torn off, and if they're placed in the household trash, that provides access to children and pets. And as 50% of the fentanyl can still remain in the patch, that can be a lethal dose. And indeed, they report, the FDA reports 10 deaths among pediatrics that suffered that tragedy.
Doctor, can you conclude? Thank you so much for the information. Can you give us a...
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say, you know, it gets confusing. There are definitely prescription drugs that you don't want to flush down the toilet. Agreed?
Absolutely.
And it has tremendous effects to not only aquatic life, but also that it ends up in our water stream. And we do oftentimes use water that comes, that is reclaimed water from sewer plants that can end up back into our system, and they can't get rid of a lot of those pharmaceuticals out of the water supply, out of the potable water supply, as a result of people flushing them. And while you suggest opiates, that may not be those kind of, have the same kind of impacts, it's hard to remember which can I and which can't I flush. So I think the best advice for the public is, don't flush, don't flush your medications. And I think that needs to be out there.
There's concerns about that, too.
Yes, and that's been made clear to us on the Alcohol Drug Advisory Board. Nonetheless, I think there are probably further opportunities, probably on the professional level. And I know amongst my pharmacist colleagues, we need to be able to counsel our patients when we dispense drugs on what the FDA has incorporated into the prescribing literature for these products.
And I think we need to work with our wastewater professionals, too.
Right. And I know that we can have the best filtration systems that we do with our sewer plants and all, they can't get rid of the pharmaceuticals out of the water at this point. But hopefully, this whole point of this presentation today is to get people to go, and you can go to the police departments, and you have a national day to dispose of your prescriptions the way we all want them to be disposed.
And secure the prescriptions, yeah.
And secure the prescriptions. Interestingly, of course, when taken as prescribed, these drugs end up in the wastewater. The next step for our board will be professional education, sort of the supply side of these products. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your advocacy.
Our next item is oral, head, neck, cancer Awareness Week, and Stan's gonna help us out with that. And Dr. Rameen, go ahead, Stan.
Thank you. On behalf of Supervisor Zerigoza, I'd like to read this resolution. The Board of Supervisors of Ventura County proclaims the week of April 22 through 28, 2012, is Oral Head and Neck Cancer Awareness Week, whereas over 50,000 American citizens are diagnosed every year with cancer of the head and neck region, and whereas less than 60% of all head and neck cancer patients will live five years following their diagnosis, and whereas over 85% of all oral and head and neck cancers could have been prevented, and a small percentage of people in the United States understand the disease, its causes, its treatments, and its prevention, and whereas a significant number of individuals treated for this disease encounter disability due to breathing, swallowing, speaking, physical and visual difficulties, and whereas increased awareness of this disease process could result in earlier diagnosis, lower functional disability, and higher survival rates. Now therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County, do hereby proclaim the week of April 22 through 28 as Oral Head and Neck Cancer Awareness Week. Furthermore, hereby proclaim the day of Friday, April 27, 2012, as Oral Head and Neck Cancer Awareness Day in Ventura County, and encourage everyone to get involved and participate in screenings for oral and head and neck cancer.
I wanted to thank the Board of Supervisor for their support of the Head and Neck Cancer Awareness Week. Just very quickly, head and neck cancer is not typically one of the cancers that always receives as much publicity as other cancers. However, it is on the rise, and we, the goal for this week is to raise awareness for the risk factors. Traditionally, the main risk factors have been smoking and tobacco use. And head and neck cancer is typically diagnosed in older individuals. However, recently, there's a new association with the human papilloma virus, and we're having much younger patients that are diagnosed with the cancer who don't have the traditional risk factors. And with this type of disease, the earlier the disease is recognized, the easier it is to be treated, and also the less the amount of functional disability the patient encounters as a result. Again, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Doctor. She's okay? She's your assistant?
Actually, one of our physician assistants.
Oh, okay. Let's take a photo. Let's catch you in the middle. What's that?
One, two, three, smile. One. One, two, three, smile.
Thank you so much.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you for coming in. Our next item, 25, is a public hearing, second public hearing.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Zerigoza, members of the board. For the record, my name is Bruce Beluski. I'm with the County Solid Waste Division within the Public Works Water and Sanitation Department. My item for you this morning is the second public hearing for proposed amendments to Ventura County Code Ordinance related to solid waste management within the unincorporated areas of Ventura County. The proposed amendments will ensure the county of Ventura continues to comply with all state's solid waste laws, especially the mandatory commercial recycling elements of Assembly Bill 341, signed by Governor Brown this past October, and which become effective July 1 of this year. Finally, I am not aware of any public comments or correspondence submitted to the county related to this item since my presentation to your board last week. And with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing and have any speakers, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll move the item. We've already heard this before.
Thank you for the good job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 26.
Morning, Chairman Zerigoza, members of the board. I'm here this morning for second hearing of adoption of County General Parks Ordinance. And you heard it the last time we were here.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, too, since we've already heard.
Maybe you open the public hearing. I have no speakers. I'm gonna close the public hearing and make a motion.
Okay, now I'll make the motion.
Okay, good. First and second.
Okay, it's approved. Okay, 27. And 27 is adoption of the Rincon Ordinance.
And again, you know, it's a --
Nothing to talk about.
It's a public hearing.
You already heard it. Read the newspaper.
I don't have any speakers, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board? You got first and second? Okay, let's vote.
I don't know, I think I heard people saying, "You're not gonna let them do business down there anymore, go get stuff."
I do want to comment on this, in that we've had this issue come up, and I appreciate staff bringing forward the request for more clarification of your authority with the board so that we can make sure that that important resource stays open to everybody in the public and everybody feels like they're getting a fair opportunity to be able to rent, you know, some time there at the beach. And so, really appreciate all of this.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is AAA Victoria Jump, item 28. And she's gonna give us her report on the strategic plan.
Good morning, members of the board.
Good morning.
Chair Zerigoza, Mr. Powers. There are two purposes for this item before you. One is that we need the board's official approval of our strategic plan so that we can forward it on to the state, and they can send us our, continue to send us our money that we need to operate our programs. And also, during the last time we brought a similar item to your board, which was an update for this fiscal year, your board wanted more time to discuss, you know, senior issues and where we're going. So it seemed like the perfect opportunity to combine two things into one presentation. And also, I have my subject matter expert, so if there's any questions that you have regarding, you know, statistics, finances, or even an advisory council perspective, we have that here. So the mission statement for our agency has changed slightly over the last year since you last saw it. Our mission statement is dictated by the state. They tell us what has to be in there. However, our advisory council added an additional part this year, which is the third item down, "Enhance and Support Existing Community-Based Service Provider Systems of Care." And so they felt that was important. But it's pretty much to develop the systems that are needed for seniors, promote citizen involvement in our planning process, and provide leadership in addressing issues that relate to older Californians. Our vision statement has also undergone an upgrade this year as a result of our public hearing. We are the focal point of promoting successful aging as a lifelong process, providing leadership that is identifiable to seniors and caregivers, and that is innovative and responsive to the changing and varied needs of older adults and caregivers. And we change this in response to a lot of good advisory council input as to where they saw us going in the future. And in particular, we're seeing as aging is a lifelong process, not something that starts when you're 60 and you need to think about it once you turn 60, that it really should be thought about from a young age, and for people to plan accordingly. So the Older Americans Act and the California Code of Regulations require us to develop and submit a strategic plan, they call it, you know, a master area plan, every four years with an update to be required every single year. So we do a longer plan every four years, but every single year we come back before you with a little short update. The state provides the guidance on what has to be contained in the plan. So if you look through the plan and you say, you know, "This is just a lot of stuff," well, it is, but the state feels that it has to be there. So in order for us to get our funding, we stick all that stuff in there that they want. It does, it makes it longer. If I had to do it, it would be like 20 pages maybe, but now it's, you know, 100, but a lot of that is state requirement. So four themes form the foundation for our plan, which is providing cost-effective services, providing effective services, being a leader in the aging community, and advocating for those over the age of 60, and responding to the emerging needs in the community, and developing those programs and resources that are needed. And that seems to change very quickly. As things happen with the economy, what we didn't see as a need before, now it has to be something that we have to address. So our challenge is always, how do we put those things into place, but also stay true to our strategic plan and the direction that we're going? So you have some brief census characteristics showing where our, and this is also in the full strategic plan, where we are right now. Persons aged 655-plus right now countywide, it's creeping up on 200,000 people. We serve the 60-plus population, which is 138, 621. These are Department of Finance figures from 2010. And they do seem to change a lot depending on where you look at. We have figures that we've seen before that put the number of 60-plus slightly higher. So we are increasing, if you look at the 65-plus, you know, it's almost 100,000, and that number is gonna continue to grow as people are living longer. So the poverty level for our county, because a lot of what we do is target our services towards those that are low income, those that are socially isolated in economic need. So the poverty level overall for the county was only 9.2%. It's lower than the state average of 13.7. The highest poverty rate is found in Santa Paula, and the lowest in Moore Park. One of the things that we look at and takes, you know, a prominent place in our plan is the Elder Economic Security Index. And this is something that was passed in part of state law last year, that when we provide, when we plan for the future, we're not just to look at those that are defined by the federal poverty level as low income, but those people that are now between the gap of what's needed to survive in this county, in the state, and what the federal poverty level is. So the UCLA has come up with a tool that we use, and we're required to put the documents on our plan. But it really looks at how, you know, how much is needed for somebody in Ventura County to survive, a senior, taking into account what the cost of housing is, medical, out-of-pocket expenses. For an elderly renter living alone, they would need $24,000 a year to live here, to survive. And that's not, you know, living it up on 24,000, that's meeting your basic needs. Right now, 47% of older Californians, 65-plus, are struggling to make ends meet statewide. However, the official poverty measure only identifies about 8% of these. So the gap between what the feds say is somebody low income, and what truly is somebody that can't afford to live here and is struggling, is a much greater, and it's a growing number. And with fixed incomes and ever-increasing costs, these people often fall through the cracks of our support systems, because they're not able to qualify for many of the public programs. You can look at somebody and say, "Oh, you know, send them to IHSS." Well, they don't meet the income criteria. We get them saying, you know, "Can you case manage them on MSSP? They don't meet the income criteria." So, you know, our struggle moving forward is, what do you do with this group of people?
Victoria, are they mainly on Social Security, Victoria?
Yes, it's Social Security and some that are on SSI as well. So it's 24,000 is what you need, and most people we find that are just surviving on Social Security of about $12,000 a year. So right now, based on their estimates, there's about 28,000 people, seniors, that are in this gap between not being able to live here and not qualifying for any public assistance programs. And these are, you know, what we are trying to struggle to provide services to this population. So according to the federal poverty level, only about 3,000 people, the government would say, were truly poor. So our challenge is, we have, you know, 28,000 people that fall in this eligibility gap of not qualifying for public programs. It's one out of two women, eight out of 10 Latino elders, six out of 10 renters, living alone.
That's what, 80% then, huh?
It's a huge and growing.
That's significant. Thank goodness, yeah.
And we're also seeing that more seniors are having to work longer now. And it's not because all of them want to work. Many of them have to. Some of them, what we see are, you know, women who are widowed, who now are down to one income and are having to go back to work and find, you know, find an occupation. We see, you know, occasionally, construction workers. You work construction all of your life, it's hard on your body. If you have to work at 70, can you do construction? It depends on, you know, your physical shape, if you can. So the senior citizen workforce is -- of not qualifying for public programs. It's one out of two women, eight out of 10 Latino elders, six out of 10 renters, living alone.
That's what, 80% then, huh?
It's, it's a huge and growing.
That's significant. Thank goodness, yeah.
And we're also seeing that more seniors are having to work longer now. And it's not because all of them want to work, many of them have to. Some of them, what we see are, you know, women who are widowed, who now are down to one income and are having to go back to work and find, you know, find an occupation. We see, you know, occasionally, construction workers. You work construction all of your life, it's hard on your body. If you have to work at 70, can you do construction? It depends on, you know, your physical shape if you can. So the senior citizen workforce is expected to grow 74% over between 2004 and 2014. So this is just the population growth of what we're expected to see. These numbers don't exactly match if you were looking at the other table, and that's because this is a 2007 projection that we still use, that there's no, they haven't provided this kind of update where we can see over the next couple of decades how this population is moving through. But your county is changing. Now we're about anywhere, depending on what number you look at, between 15 and 17% of the county is over the age of 60. And you're looking at, you know, for the long term, the next, you know, 50 years or so, that it's going to be in the 20s. So this is just kind of, so you can see, you know, graphically how that, how the growth in the senior population has gone. In 2000, the last census in 2000, we had just over 100,000 people that were, it was like 107,000 and some change, over the age of 60. And by 2040, you're looking at over 250,000 people here that are going to be over the age of 60. So I would say power to the seniors, but, that wouldn't be appropriate.
25%.
Okay, so this is just to show our funding and how it's gone over the past couple of years. On, the big pink bars are showing our net county cost over the years. The red line, which is, don't look at it, you know, together because then you think that, oh, you know, we got more net county costs than we did federal funds, which is not the case, but. And the, the red line is the total revenue over the past couple of years. Our, if you look at the, the total, the red line, our federal appropriation has been declining, and a lot of that has to do with the state's cuts to our program, and they're no longer able to fund programs that they had in the past. So for 11 and 12 this year, our, what we estimated to be our total funding from all sources was about $4 million. Our, our grantees, which is, you know, an interesting thing, and I don't think that a lot of agencies have this, but our community partners also put money into programs when they apply for a grant with us. So they leverage, you know, an additional $2 million that goes into senior services. And also seniors donate an average of about 327,000, but we've seen that decline. These are not wealthy seniors that are accessing our services at all. These are people that need the services, are there because they need a meal, they need somebody to help bathe them. The feds require us to allow people the opportunity to donate to our, to provide for the services that they're receiving. And so we have to provide that opportunity to donate for most programs. The people that we're dealing with are so low income that we don't see any donations for some programs. Other programs for the meal program, seniors donate, like this year on average, like a dollar a meal, they'll put in. And some people, it's, they'll put in pennies a day because that's what they can donate, and others, it's a little bit more. So our net county cost for this year is 310, and we thank you very much for every single dollar that we receive. So for, when we put together this plan, we didn't have any of our funding estimates for the next year. We still don't have that from the state. So all of this is based on the assumption that we're going to get the same amount as we did last year. We're not so optimistic that we think that they're going to give us more money, but we're going on a status quo assumption. The impacts of any future state budget cuts, like during the May revise, we're a popular target, we'll address those when we know them. We are watching the impact of state legislation as well as the reauthorization of the Older Americans Act. The MSSP program is one of those programs under the dual-eligible pilot, so they're looking at potentially shifting that whole program to managed care. And so we're watching that. Anytime they change who can get IHSS or the number of hours, it has a tremendous impact on our system and that people run to us for, you know, for services to make up what they've lost. And we, we're to the point where we don't have any, you know, additional services to provide. We do have to submit this plan by May the 1st. So for our needs, gaps, and barriers. Our barriers, I guess I'll do the barriers first. We, we continue to have the same barriers year after year, and sometimes they, they change somewhat. Some of them, including the geography, we have seniors that still see the grade as like this, you know, between East County and West County, this is like this great divide, and they don't want to travel for services outside of where their, their community. So we still have that. I think it's, it's kind of getting better because people are used to it, it's not going to go away, and if they're going to have to travel to get services, but that continues. Transportation continues to be a huge issue for seniors. And really, as people are no longer able to drive, and studies have shown that when, when somebody gives up their keys and they pass away, it's generally about a 10-year period. So that's a 10-year period that that person is dependent upon, family, caregivers, or if they don't have anyone, public transit to get around. And the lack of coordinated transportation between cities and seniors with a lot of mobility, being able to move between cities to get to doctors, you know, is an issue. We also see a barrier with culture. We have, we still have the reluctance of a lot of non-English-speaking seniors to come to a government agency for help. And also, and we're also seeing that it's also a lack of awareness of those services as well. And particularly in caregiving, that's where, you know, there's a lot of things that are available, but people are...
And Victoria, what are we doing in that? Are we, what kind of media are we using to, to get that information out to, to those individuals that don't know about the services?
For, for most of our grantees, they, they have staffed with the ability to speak other languages. It's not like it was, you know, 10, 15 years ago, where having, you know, bilingual staff was kind of, you know, not the normal thing. Now, a lot more do have bilingual staff. They attend a lot more outreach, I think that they try to target, connect with churches, other community groups to reach these populations, but it's still a struggle.
Almost a trilingual, you know, because of the mistaken...
We do, we do have that.
Yeah. Okay, so that's how you get in the, out through the churches and other services and, okay?
But it's, you know, it's still, it's, is it enough? You know, no, because you still have people that, we find that despite all of our efforts, they're not aware of us. And other than, you know, going to every single house and finding every single person, we struggle with that. We are seeing that there's a growing information barrier as more and more effort is to put things into print, to put things on the web as a means to communicate with people. If you're a senior that doesn't have access to that, you totally missed out on that. And so we're mindful as an agency to make sure that we're not using just one form of reaching this population, but we're, you know, keeping with the tried and true as well, which is being out there a lot in the community. And our other barrier is limited resources. The funding for programs, services, and staff, they're really not sufficient to completely address the needs of the target population, which those are the low-income, but also this growing people that are in the eligibility gap. So our needs and our gaps are somewhat similar. For needs, our current funding's not sufficient to reach those, our target population, which is the low-income, isolated person. We do worry a lot about it, the, the agency, that person that lives alone, that has nobody there for them. And so a lot of our efforts are to try to find that person, connect with them, so that somebody knows that they're there.
Thank you. Victoria, don't you also work with HSA's rapid response team in that area?
Yes, yes. We are, we do work with, with that. And actually, I'll, one of the, I'm going to mention a case in a minute that shows you what we do with them. So we have a growing need because of the way that the economy is, because people are living longer, because people are not, you know, the family members are moving away, people are trying to provide distant caregiving, or they have no caregivers and they've outlived all of their friends, which we hear frequently. There is a growing need for more case management. For our own case management program that deals with those people that are on Medi-Cal, no share of costs, that meet the skilled nursing admission criteria, we're finding that they are needier and more demanding as clients than before. They're no fault of their own, it's just their circumstances just make them that way. We're finding in many cases that we can't send one social worker to home, we have to send two. We deal with people that live with gang members, people that, clients that are out of prison and, you know, we're sex offenders and we can't send, you know, somebody alone into that household. We have people with criminal convictions. And so now it's not just one person, it's two people that also have to provide. We're finding that there are more complex needs that aren't easily met and require a significant amount of time and collaboration with other agencies. And our staff is part of the rapid response team that, for HSA's rapid response team, and we have a lot of joint adult protective service MSSP clients. One of the clients that was just brought to my attention by chance yesterday was a long-term client that had vascular dementia, a double amputee, takes multiple medications, has a history of alcoholism and domestic violence. He was lucky enough to have a caregiver who was his wife care for him for many years, but the strain of caregiving took its toll on her health. She wound up in the hospital, now she's in a nursing facility. And you have somebody who, because of their past behavior with their family, the family doesn't want to be involved. There is no skilled facility that will take him in this county right now. So whose problem does he become? IHSS sends in a worker to care for him, but they can't provide 24-hour supervision for this person. Police have been out multiple times. This takes, you know, an inordinate amount of time for the social worker trying to coordinate everything for this, this person. And where does, you know, where is he going to go? Unfortunately, these, in the past, we used to have, you know, this type of person, we didn't get that often, but now we're seeing that this is the norm. And if you, if we get a monolingual Spanish speaker, that takes even more time. Because a lot of times when we get to that person, the family needs case management because they've stayed away from the system for so long that they need help all connecting to the services that they're eligible for. We're also seeing a growing need for in-home services, like homemaker, chore, personal care, home modifications. Respite is another huge one that we can never provide enough funding for. We're also seeing that more people are coming to us for help in meeting their basic needs. We have set aside funding to address those people that are like critical, that it means the difference between them staying in their home or them being on the street. So we are targeting our services to that, that population, but there are other people that get turned away because we have to focus on that, the most needy. Typical emails, calls that we get, you know, are relating to people with housing. They'll have an income of $1,100 a month, they'll have a dog. They want low-cost housing where they can stay with their dog. They don't want much, they're willing to stay wherever, but they're on the Section 8 waiting list and they could be waiting for years. And they're afraid that if they don't find something that they could afford, any savings that they had saved up are going to be gone. Which, once those savings are gone, they come into our system and they, you know, we find ourselves providing for them. Some of the gaps, there is no long-term case management program for those people that are in the eligibility gap. So those, that 28,000, there is no, nothing long-term for them. We can do short-term targeted case management, but our resources are focused on the extremely low income because that's what the state provides funding to do. There is no funding stream to provide long-term in-home services for people that are in that gap. We, when we get a referral from APS, from Public Health of, help stabilize this person, they need something, a lot of times what we can provide is something very short-term. We can provide, you know, 30 hours, 50 hours of some kind of service. But when somebody needs service long-term, every single month, there is no funding source that does this. And IHSS is, is mandated to serve those people that qualify for that program, which are A bigger problem is that there aren't really, there's, there's nothing for people that are under 60 that are disabled. If you were not born with a disability as part of the tri-county system, the regional center system, there, there is nothing for you. We have them coming, knocking on our door, saying, you know, please serve us, and we have to say, you know, politely, you know, come back when you're 60. We do have funding through VCTC to address the transportation needs for this population, but not for their other needs. There's also not enough geriatricians in our county to deal with this aging population. It's estimated that there's less than 10. And when you have this many people who have very different, you know, health needs than somebody younger, you don't have the expertise to, to deal with them. There also is not enough housing options for people who are in the, who are in that eligibility gap. For people that can qualify for public assistance for the housing, they can be on the waiting list and eventually, hopefully, they'll get something. But for those people that, you know, are making just above and can't live where they're living for whatever reason, they're, we're seeing that that's an increasing, you know, problem. And we give people a lot of different options about where to live, and sometimes people are picky about not wanting to change their situation, they want to live in, in this particular community. But there's not, there's not enough, you know, I guess, middle-income housing for a senior. And we also have a need for a lot more preventative healthcare programs that keep that younger, the younger 60 population from getting, you know, taking care of their health now, addressing any chronic disease issues so that they don't age poorly and then become an issue to the system where we're struggling to provide services for them. So for our planning for the future, we take into all of this, all of these things into account, but given our somewhat stagnant funding from the feds, we're limited in what we can do. You know, it would be, it'd be wonderful if the federal government adequately funded these programs, but they don't. The funding we have is what it is. So this strategic plan before you is how we plan to address our community over the next four years. And it's also in alignment with your own board's strategic plan. And we fit in under focus area for community well-being, which is to ensure that individuals and families are provided timely and efficient assistance to meet and sustain basic needs. And older adults will have access to the resources and services that will enable them to maintain their health, safety, dignity, and quality. to maintain their health, safety, dignity, and quality of life. And then, we have the three objectives also, under that, which deal with our nutrition program, our support services, and increasing access to information and resources and services. So, overall, in our plan, we have four goals, which are, you know, the first, that older adults will have access to the resources and services that will enable them to maintain their health, safety, dignity, and quality of life. Goal two, eligible family caregivers will have access to the resources and services to ease the emotional and physical strain of caregiving and support one in their efforts to care for their loved ones. Goal three will be an identifiable leader and advocate for older adult caregivers and service providers. And goal four, we will identify and address the emerging and changing needs of our 60-plus population, as well as baby boomers. So, for our successes, we look at success in a couple of different ways. One, we look at where we can change a system to make it better. We look at where we can, you know, put services together in a way that makes sense and makes them cost-efficient and effective for those receiving them. And we also look at success as, on a case-by-case basis, on where we've taken somebody who needed a lot of assistance and we've stabilized them. We don't think that we're going to, you know, we're not naive to think that we're going to improve everybody's life, but if we can stabilize them and keep them, their situation from getting worse, then we consider that a success. So, over the past few years, one of the, one of the issues that we've continually tried to address is the, the growing food insecurity issue, where people, because of the price of food, because of the cost of everything else, that they're no longer able to really buy the kinds of food that they need to. And so, we do have our senior nutrition program, which serves, and that number keeps on increasing every year, so the number of people we're serving for senior nutrition. But we've also have a garden behind the juvenile justice complex, three acres, where we grow food for our senior nutrition program. It's seniors and kids growing food together. The excess food does go to food share, which goes into their brown bag program, so it also benefits seniors as well.
Victoria, there's, is there a garden in Colonia too that?
Yes.
That's, that's what, about two acres maybe?
I think so.
Yeah. So, that's a, that's a big plus there too.
Well, we, we live in the perfect place to, to have a garden, a year-round garden. We also do a pet food drive for seniors that are on our home-delivered programs that can't, you know, afford pet food. We do holiday meal deliveries, and this is through churches. Churches will donate food, they'll donate bonds cards, but also like, you know, different foods and cans and stuff. And we'll put together baskets and deliver it to those people that we know have no one there for them during the holidays. So, we target that to the people that are really isolated. Our nutritionist, our registered dietitian, does a lot of counseling in the community to let people know about, you know, different, how people should age healthy by what they eat. So, she's trying to also, you know, prevent future issues and trying to keep, you know, people healthy as well. We have, we have a disaster kit project that's been in place for a couple of years. We know during a disaster that, in many times, that there's going to be a delay and when help can show up. And so, we've been working with several different county agencies on helping to train seniors to start thinking about disasters, so if something happens, they're okay, so that they have a disaster response plan, so they've thought about where to go, who to contact. We also, through HSA, have most of our clients registered in their vulnerable populations database. So, these people have been identified, if there is a disaster, that somebody needs to come and get them because they won't have the ability to leave on their own. We've worked for the past five or six years on expanding a transportation program in response to community need. The existing transportation system through VCTC doesn't meet all seniors' needs. You have people that are okay with taking the fixed route, the bus, then you have other people that are okay with a dial-a-ride, but you have another growing group of people that are inappropriate clients for dial-a-ride. And so, how do these people get to their medical appointments? A lot of these people have medical conditions where they can't sit and wait, you know, half an hour to be picked up or dropped off. Some of them, it's because they have dementia and they can't be, you know, left alone to Over the past couple of years, we've received funding from VCTC to fund this extra third-tier of transportation. So, people that are qualified for the program, those people that need somebody to physically take them out of the house because they can't get down to the curb for dial-a-ride. We, it's a growing program, we take quite a bit of people to medical appointments. And right now, it's limited to medical because we couldn't, we can barely keep up with the demand now, and if we opened it up for social activities or shopping or anything like that, we would be in trouble. So, right now, it's medical only. Our elder help program was also created in response to need. And this program is unique in that there are no administrative costs with the program, 100% of the funding goes to direct services for clients. We save on costs by having other social workers and other community agencies qualify the people for the program. So, they've done an in-home visit, they know the person's situation, and we can provide, you know, homemaker chore, personal care, home modifications, which is a growing, you know, thing. Everybody wants grab bars now to be safe. We also have our project with the courts, which is, I think, rolling out this Friday. We have a legal guide for seniors, and it's, it was a multi-year project, but we, we had lots of questions come up from seniors, "What do I do about this?" Or, if you are getting your grandchildren because their parents can no longer care for them, understanding what, you know, what you need to do. So, we wrote a book. And so, the book goes along with the class, so you can't get the book unless you go to the class. And so, the class is taught by our, our attorney that we contract with Gray Law does, is going to be doing the class. Okay, so that is the last of my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Victoria. Any, any questions? Supervisor, just a minute.
Quite a few. Number one, thank you for, thank you for your work, and when you come and do this presentation, I know you're, you, you have, you have lots of challenges there with you, and so, you're, you're trying to share the whole big picture in, in terms of, of the challenges. But, I guess the first thing that I would just, just say is that, you know, this is, in the old days, before Social Security, being elderly almost meant a guarantee of poverty for, for just a tremendous amount of people. And now, with these, as these cutbacks and these programs are coming, and as your statistics are showing, we're, we are having an increasing number of people falling into poverty, as they, as they retire, as they become unable to, you know, unable to work. So, this is a growing problem for us here in Ventura County, and it's one that we have to really be aware of and, and take seriously. I also believe that it's almost, that the whole issue of the impoverished population is one that is very easily forgotten. And, you know, at the federal level and at the state level, it's almost always the, the program that is being cut first, because they, these people do not have advocates for them. The lowest-income people do not have advocates that are anywhere near as effective as, as advocates at other level. But it's our responsibility here at the county level to do what we can with the funding sources that we receive, right, to try to do the best that we can for them. So, a couple of questions I have for you. In terms of food insecurity, can you tell me where we are in that process in terms of meals on wheels, people taking that over, what's, what's happening with that, that issue?
Sure. Unfortunately, this year, for the first time, we've had to put a cap on the number of meals that, that we're able to serve. And, you know, and that's, it's a funding issue essentially. Because the federal government hasn't really greatly increased the appropriations for congregate or home-delivered meals, that with our fixed costs that we have to pay for the food, we're limited to the number of people that can be served. Right now, the majority of the people, about 60, I think about 60% of, 66% of the people that receive meals for us, from us, are in the home setting. And that seems to be the trend over the past couple of years. So, our, our efforts are, right now, focused on making sure that those people continue to get the meals that they need. So, if there are cuts, you know, unfortunately, we're looking at congregate site cuts because we need to protect those that are most vulnerable. But, we've seen a huge increase in demand over the last couple of years, just the number of people coming in, into the meal program. And along with that goes, you know, a huge increase in the demand for the number of meals. You have the meal numbers? Oh, I think I have them. Do you have the, the number? Okay, so, in 2000, to just give you an idea of like meal increases, from 2008, 2009, there were about 192,000 meals served. Last year, 247,000 meals. And we can't continue to serve that many, and so, we've had to, to put, you know, caps into place.
So, that's an area, I'm sorry, that's an area of, you know, and we know that from Food Bank and, you know, what we've heard.
Right.
Demand for food, you know, in this county overall, has been growing dramatically, and with the senior population, you have that same thing. I think it's one that I'm certainly going to ask our CEO's office to try to make sure we, we, you know, think creatively as we're moving forward with, you know, with our budget, et cetera, try to make sure, that's, that's an essential component, I think, that we have to be able to make sure that, that people have adequate food as we're, as we're doing that. So, that was, that was one major question. And you have the poverty statistics that, that you identified with the Elder Index, and you, there was just one other question that I had, and then I'll be done, and that was, and...
Well, he looks for that. The Ochsart Senior Center, Wilson Senior Center in Colonia and Southside, is that funded by Ochsart or by?
We, we provide the funding.
There's quite a few meals there that, that are served.
There is. When we approached all of our partners with the cap on the number of meals, you have some cities that have said, you know, "It's fine, we're gonna, we'll make up the difference." The city of Ochsart is one of those cities that said, "We'll, we'll figure out a way to continue."
Because I've been there before, where they serve them breakfast and lunch, you know, and...
So, what cities have stepped up and to say that they will, will do that, the partners in this?
I just remember Ochsart, there are two other cities I can get back to on the official.
Okay, all right.
Simi Valley is also a city that's going to continue. And for the other cities, we're working with them as well. We're monitoring the number of meals served overall in the program, so if somebody is down, then we give those meals to another city so that more meals can be served.
Okay, so, so we're growing the number of meals, it's just that the demand is growing faster than the number of meals that, that we're growing, right? And we're, yeah, that's, that's something.
Correct. And it's also, it has to do with food costs, with the Consumer Price Index, you know, the price of meat and dairy. So, we know our food costs, and we, we, when we go out for a competitive bid, we lock in the prices for the next four years. And so, what we're seeing now, the next coming year, is an increase from four years ago, so...
And when did you institute the cap?
We started the cap in January of this year.
Okay, that's, so that's news to us, right? Okay, in terms of that, because that's, I, I have a real concern about the cap, and that's, that's...
The cap wasn't, and it looks like everybody is going to be able to do it for this year. Our concern is like next year, because we're going down more number of meals that can be served, but we're working closely with all of our, our partners, and they're, and some of them are coming up with creative ways to continue to serve meals, just meals that we're not paying for.
All right. So, so you have a potential cap, but right now, you're still making it in terms of meeting the needs?
We have a cap, we know budget-wise, we know the total number, total amount of food that we can buy this year. We know that number because we have a contract, and anything above that would, you know, push us up, you know, into net county costs, which we're staying out of that area.
But right now, you're, right now, you are...
We're hoping for this year that, we're looking, we look at the numbers regularly to see if we can bring it in.
So, you've established a cap, and you, you haven't gotten to the cap yet, and you're hopeful that you'll be able to make it this year, right?
But next year, yeah, next year, we put it actually in the RFP, what that cap was. And we've, we've made it clear that we cannot purchase any more than 170,000 meals.
I guess, and I would, I would say that, that that's, that's a, that's, that's a new development for us, and it's, it's an essential, it's an essential issue, and it, and it's one that I, I hope we can...
And that's one of the reasons we thought this report was so important to that.
Great, great.
Let me just say, what's the average cost of a meal?
Right now, the average cost of a meal is, yeah, okay, it's $3.41. And then, next year, because of the renegotiating the contract, we know that that amount's going to go up to about $3.77. And that's on average because it's not, we don't serve the same meal every single day. And so, there's a lot of variables depending on which, what you buy, you know, do you serve them yogurt, do you give them cheese sticks? Do you give them a beef entree, which costs a lot more than a chicken entree? And so, but on average, we've been able to keep it at $3.41 for a complete meal, which includes the salad, the milk, the entree, you know, everything comes with it.
Is that a lunch meal?
Is it?
Lunch?
Yes.
Is, is part of that meal that you serve milk at every meal and that whole thing? I mean, is this part of these certain standards? Because I've...
We, we do serve, we're required to meet certain nutritional requirements. So, we can't say, you know, you can't have milk because calcium is a required component, but we don't force it on anybody.
I was going to say, I understand that, but I also understood some of the stuff, even the sheriff dealt with this in the prisons, where all of a sudden, they're required to serve milk, and 80% of the people just throw the milk out. It's just a waste because most adults don't drink milk. And so, I'm wondering, are we, is there certain things that we need to make changes to that, that we're not, and I don't want to say wasting it, but I mean, I know you got to give them calcium, as other ways to get calcium versus the milk, but that's an expensive part of that meal.
It is. We've looked carefully over the past year at reducing every single component, and like one of the unpopular things that, that we did was take away salad dressing. You know, people like salad dressing, but to me, is it, you know, an additional thing or is it a required nutritional component? It wasn't. And so, we, you know, suggested to the sites that they put bottles on the table. We've identified anything that wasn't absolutely 100% part of that nutritional component. What we do, however, to keep things from being wasted, is that we have, you know, a policy of, instead of just serving people, asking people what they want to meet the nutritional components, we have to have it all available, but you can say, "No, I don't want that roll." And then, we save it. You know, "I don't want that milk."
So, there's been some ways to try to save some of that. What else has happened with just these people could be, their parents of somebody else, there's somebody, you know? there's somebody, you know, what is, I know society is kind of, I don't take care of my own parents anymore, and is, are we seeing more of that, that is coming back as things get tighter, or parents trying to help, I mean, kids trying to help their parents, or is?
You see some of that, but you also see, I mean, you see a couple of things. One is that there is this belief, for whatever reason, that people pay taxes, and therefore, it's the government's responsibility to care for their loved one. And I think that there's this misconception that, you know, it's twenty-four-seven coverage in the home, and, you know, everything is gonna be wonderful, and that's not the case. You have people, seniors, that were not the best parents, and so you see the, you know, the children not wanting anything to do with the parents, not wanting to take that responsibility. You see children that are busy with their own lives, you know, they have their own kids, they don't have the time to do it. But you also see people that are stepping up and trying to do long-distance caregiving, or allowing their family members to move in with them as an option.
We see a lot of that, too, because of the cost of?
Well, I was gonna say, one of the things we talk about, these parents, I mean, these people getting a little bit poorer, less money to choose, is that a lot of, I know when I grew up, my grandparents came in, lived with us until they died, that kind of thing, and you didn't have all that money going to rent and all those other things, they could still survive during that time and do that. And we, I think as society, we've kind of said to our seniors, we just throw you away, and I, it's a terrible situation, but it's a breakdown of our society willing to do that, you know? No matter how bad my parents treated me, you know, they still gave me a roof, my head fed me, and those things, I still got a responsibility. I hate to see that part go away, because that's where a lot of this money that they have is to provide roof for their head, is being used up, they could have food and a life and all their things.
Okay, any other questions, excellent report?
Yeah, but one, one, one thing that, in, in, one of the things that's happening is that these seniors that are living alone in a rental place, and nobody's visiting them, and then they're dependent upon this, on this food service. You can spend a lot of time sort of talking about what happened to the, to whatever relationships that they had, but it could be an estranged, you know, son or daughter, that, you know, they've had a conflict in life or whatever. But bottom line is whether they, and some of them don't, just don't have, you know, access to family members any longer. It's, but when they get into that circumstance and that situation, you don't have a choice. Your responsibility is, if they're, they're in that situation, you know, you have to, you know, take the resources you have and try to stretch them over those, those people. And I think that's one of the things, I mean, it's a good point in terms of trying to economize. I think having them ask what food do you want is a smart, smart thing to do. And I do know this, this organization has been economizing and economizing for such a long time. They are, they are masters at that, because they've had to stretch every, every dollar as they go forward. So, I don't think, I don't think overall, the solution to this is gonna be economizing. But I think that here, we have to, you know, we have to come up with other, other ways and.
Supervisor Long and Park.
And just as the agency is, is being challenged with the reduced resources and higher cost, the partners are, too.
Any impact on them, you know, reductions on them, impact us. And the same thing, if we can't provide, it becomes a burden on them. The system is so interconnected.
Right. I think the, the public policy questions around all of this are going to be, are already staring us in the face, and will be for the next decade, as we boom out, and as we boomers age out, and, and there's this huge number of folks to deal with, of which you will have a percentage of them who, for a variety of reasons, aren't able to take care themselves. And is, so the question is, do you walk away from them? Do you ignore that? And the answer, of course, is you don't. So, we'll have to figure out how to do it.
Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. And a lot of it has to do with the economy right now. While we have a growing population, right now, we have a, an economy that's hurting, and people are feeling it more. And I, you know, certainly support making sure that we can help fund, so we don't have to put a cap on people getting food, you know, those necessities. And then also looking at the type of housing arrangements, and things that we've come from the previous senior summits, talking about ways that we can do some networking, because there are also people who own houses, live all by themselves, senior citizens, they've got that great Prop 13 rate, they're not gonna sell, you know, but others that are looking for places to rent. But if there's some kind of networking services, something that we are looking at, and I don't know if you can address that.
We actually have a pilot program in-house. We're providing the space, but it's the Ventura Housing Authority and the city of Ventura, and it's a home, it's called Home Share. And they're looking at matching people that need, you know, anybody that has an extra space with seniors that need housing. And so, there's, you know, home visits and everything required, and they try to match people. But right now, that's only for the city of Ventura.
And that would be great, to be able to see that program grow regionally throughout, throughout the county. It's a great idea.
Michael, you have?
Just real quick, thank you for the report, Victoria. I think it's, what you're saying is, this is a small department, but the issues that they're dealing with are big and growing, and they do a lot with a little. It's really extraordinary. And I think a big part of what we need to continue to look at, and that we have, is the, the network that you mentioned, the connectedness with Social Services, HSA, with the healthcare agency, and our private community partners as well. And I think that's something that you, you and your team have done a lot of, and we need to continue to build that as we plan with those other departments for providing services to this, to this group.
We just earlier today, we've seen what basically a task force putting together regarding homelessness, dealing with the people who are homeless, emancipated foster youth, veterans, but this is another segment that really needs to have like a task force put together.
Victoria, what is the additional age now that the people live in longer, what, than, say, maybe five, ten years ago, or?
It creeps up, you know, slowly, so it's not like, you know, you have ten more years kind of thing.
Say sixty-five was, now it's seventy, or seventy now it's eighty?
I think it's in its low, late seventies, early eighties still.
Early eighties.
I think it's like eighty-three, eighty-four.
Yeah, so, I want to thank you for an excellent, excellent report.
We're celebrating, two people are ninety years old at our conference last weekend.
That's right.
I know, my mom's going in ninety-three, so.
Oh, right.
So, this is a receiving file?
I need approval.
Some other actions?
Yeah.
Okay, what?
Move the recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, and that's approved.
Okay.
And for the board, you know, we have no closed session, and our next item is one We're gonna continue with item thirty-two. And Mr. Bennett?
Thank you very much, Chairman Zaragoza. Whoop, there we go. Sure, that's off, right? And make sure you turn off your cell phones, if you please. The, in 2008, we adopted these Climate Change Action Awards, and we do these every year, right around the same time that we do Earth Day. And this is the first time we're doing it in the afternoon like this. We appreciate people coming, or trying to figure out when is the best time for people to come and get their awards and all of that. But in keeping with the spirit of the awards, we only do the solicitation by email, we don't send out paper, and we also contacted the gamut of environmental organizations, business and development organizations. We started February fifteenth, and we end up today here with nominees and winners. We have certificate, certificates of recognition for all nominees, and then we have plaques for the winners in the environmental-friendly category that we identify. The awards format this year, we'll have different supervisors read the nominees in each category, and then I'll read the winner in each category, and we'll move on to the next category. We have nominees out there, and if you, when you get your nomination, if you'll come down then, or you just want the award winners to come down, is that right? Whatever? What's that?
Yes, award winners and the nominee.
Great, okay, that's for the picture, right? But as we're, as we're reading the nominees, we want each nominee to come down. So, as you, as we read the nominee, as we're reading about your business, your city, your school, whatever, if you'll come down to the podium, then you will all be down here in front, and then we'll identify who, who the particular winner is. We've got a number of nominees and categories, so let's go ahead and get started. And the first category is sustainable business practices. There's two, two nominees in sustainable business practices. I'm sorry, no, there's, there's two, there's a, there's a large business, small, small business, right? So, it's two winners in the sustainable business practice, right? And the Crown Plaza, represented by Gary Peterson. Do we have Gary Peterson here? And that's the winner in the large category competition, are you saying? No, that's what your thing says here, right? So, we have other nominees, right? All right, let me read about Ventura County, I mean Ventura Crown Plaza, right? The energy-saving majors were introduced through energy management systems and use of fluorescent lights, ceiling fans, linen cards, lights-out cards, motion sensors for public restrooms, meeting rooms, exercise rooms, and it combined for a major energy bill reduction at Crown Plaza. When water-saving equipment and techniques were introduced, such as low-flow showerheads, serving water on request only in restaurants, low-flow toilets, waterless urinals, toilet tank fill diverters, and older toilets and linen cards, water bills are reduced dramatically. Waste hauling is a huge expense for the hotel, which can be lowered drastically through recycling and avoiding wastefully packaged products. Hotelers can ask vendors to deliver products in minimal wrapping, and the vendors can be asked to deliver products one day, pick up the packaging materials the next day. All these practices reduce the need for energy conservation, both from fossil fuel and natural gas, which are major sources of greenhouse gas. And it is a pleasure for us to nominate Ventura County, I mean Ventura Crown Plaza. And our next nomination, Supervisor Long, you're going to read. By the way, Supervisor Zaragoza is not going to read any, because he has a throat problem and is struggling with that.
Can I apologize for that?
The next nominee.
Yes, thank you. And I'm very pleased the nominee to describe this, and it's the Real Refill Shop, it's Friday Lubina, it's Friday with us, she is. Thank you. Come on down. The Refill Shop. Recycling has become commonplace, but the owner of the Refill Shop and New Ventura Store is hoping people start thinking more about the reuse part of the equation. The store on Main Street in Ventura is offering an alternative to recycling bottles of shampoo, conditioner, window cleaner, laundry detergent, and other products, instead offering a way to refill them. Owner Michelle Stevens calls her business Fun Green. It's a way to stop throwing out bottles each month and still have the benefit of something like lavender peppermint shampoo, made with mostly organic ingredients. "I wanted to offer a better way," she said. Customers can pump out what they need into bottles she sells, or bring in their clean bottles and fill them up. Stevens weighs them and sells each product by the ounce, and she tries to adhere to the values of reusing and recycling to cut waste generated by the business, selling the buckets of her products arrive in and offering the cardboard shipping boxes on Craigslist. "If everybody starts doing this, we'll have less waste," she said, "and this is where we should be headed." And so, that is called the Refill Shop appropriately. That's great. Great, okay.
Thanks. And the next nominee will be read by Supervisor Parks.
Oh, I'm very fortunate to get this one, because it's also like my favorite restaurant in Thousand Oaks, and you'll see why. Pizza Salad. Pizza Salad, Thousand Oaks commits to consistently providing fresh, organic gourmet food to enable the better health of their customers and the environment. They are America's first truly organic pizza restaurant, offering a menu made only with USDA-certified organic ingredients and environmental responsibility. This combines good health with something that tastes good, too. The olive oil and flowers in their dough, the herbs and spices in the sauces, the salad dressings, fresh vegetables, meats and cheeses are all certified organic. Pure and flavorful food, the way nature originally intended, no additives, no chemicals, no substitutes, no unknowns, just organic goodness. Are you getting hungry? Pizza Salad serves an organic menu sourced from regional farmers whenever possible. They proudly support a cooperative of certified organic farmers and growers, helping to provide opportunities for regional farmers to make a sustainable living and conserve natural resources, and they deliver. In a crease. Yes.
And they deliver?
Yes.
Will they deliver to Camarillo? All right.
Okay, and you're finished? Supervisor Long?
Yes, I have the next one. I'm very, very proud to have this one. Ochsner Pallet Company. Those of you who know the corner of Las Postas and Fifth Avenue, Fifth Street, it's where our, our districts meet. The, what was always referred to as the Lima Bean Site, the old Lima Bean Site, is now called the Ochsner Pallet Company. Beatrice Vasquez and her husband Elias own and operate it, if you'd like to come forward, Beatrice and Elias. For almost twenty years, they've operated the Ochsner Pallet Company, which sells, buys, and trades new-use and custom pallets to hundreds of Ventura County businesses, primarily serving the agricultural community. Ochsner Pallet Company received $145,000 RMDZ loan in 2011 to purchase two pallet-making machines and a heat-treating machine, and they hired five new employees to operate the new machinery. The purchase opened the door for the company to work with off-specification or broken pallets that are often disposed of in most pallet reuse companies. This practice increased their pallet production by 4,000 tons per year. Even more, the company was able to utilize the heat-treating machine to treat the pallets for export, creating more opportunities for their reuse and recycling services. This green, small business utilized community resources to improve its sustainability that not only resulted in stability during these challenging economic times, but readied it for growth. The Ochsner Pallet Company is a model for small business, further work on environmental sustainability, and creating products and services that build upon reduction, reuse, and recycling for the benefit of all of us.
Well, thank you very much. And before I, before I win, before I announce the winner, I just want to point out to the businesses that are represented here today, been conducted by a couple of businesses that actually had people cite, they were smaller businesses trying to get moving, and they actually had people cite the fact that they won the award here, were nominated here, and they were able to advertise that, put that on their website, and it helped them move forward, and they specifically identified this. So, the winner in the large business category is the Ventura Crown Plaza, but I want to keep calling the Ventura County Crown Plaza. After you've worked, if you've worked here this long, you can't say the word Ventura without saying the word county, right? It's a challenge. And the winner in the small, small business category? And the winner in the small business category, very tough competition there, but it's the Oxnard Pallet Company. Congratulations. And we're going to take your picture, if you'll just wait, we're going to take your picture right afterwards, otherwise it takes a really long time to keep bringing people down in each category. So we'll take a picture of all, everybody, of all the nominees and the award winners. We'll take them right after this.
If you can stick around.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Parks, I want to take this personally, maybe a quick.
I bet. I don't know, she'd have to report it.
Okay. And this one, this one will go, this one will go a little bit faster. The next category is Carbon Reduction, and there were three categories, small, medium, and large, and we received a nominee from each category, so each one is an award winner. And the first award winner in the small organization category.
Is Deardorff Family Farms. And Supervisor Bennett was talking about how some of these companies have used the fact they've gotten this Climate Action Award as part of their marketing. I also know some companies farm particularly that actually gets business because they are so environmentally friendly. McDonald's looks to them and says, "You're doing such a great job, we want to use your products." So this is a wonderful award, and it's to Deardorff Family Farms, Scott and Tom Deardorff. And the Deardorff Family Farms in Oxnard is spending more than $10 million on a new 115,000-square-foot facility designed to become Green Building Certified. Not an easy thing to do. The project, 99% completed, is a major upgrade for the family farm, which has been running its processing, packaging, and administrative operations out of these three separate facilities on Mountain View Avenue in Oxnard since 1960s. And I'm reading this one for Supervisor Zaragoza. "The project also puts the farm in the same arena as the other tri-county agricultural companies, such as Gil's Onion, Limonera, and Haline's Nursery, that has spearheaded sustainable farming practices. The new Deardorff facility is a long-term investment for this farm that's been in the family for four generations, and while it's cost more upfront to build this, quote, 'it's more about short-term capital investment for long-term return on that investment.' You spend a little more on materials on the front end for the long-term benefits of sustainability and energy efficiency. To learn, or to earn the leadership in energy and environmental design, that's L-E-E-D, or LEED certification from the U.S. Green Building Council, the facility is built on an infill site rather than on fertile farm ground."
Great.
"And uses bioswells, which is a landscape element designed to remove pollution from surface runoff water. And it also has recycled content-building materials and water-energy-efficient fixtures. So landscaping and equipment are all part of the effort. So congratulations to you."
Thank you, Scott. And the City of Ojai, medium-sized organization, represented by Paul Blatts, the mayor pro tem in the City of Ojai. "Ojai City Council Commissioners and Staff strive to maintain a high quality of life for all Ojai residents through exceptional community-based programs, supports of the arts and cultural activities, and strong community involvement that embraces principles of sustainability. The city's teamed up with the Ojai Valley Green Coalition to identify key environmental priorities throughout the community, such as night sky policies, ocean-friendly gardens, energy-efficient projects, along with a plastic bag ban to reduce litter in its nearby watershed. The city's leaders had the courage to act on such a ban in the face of possible litigation. Now their public spaces and creeks will see a reduction in litter thereby, and thereby leading to a savings of fossil fuel that was previously expounded to fuel vehicles for litter reduction and removal. The city recently completed a major lighting upgrade in its parks that is combining for 72,000 kilowatt-hour savings that equates to over $10,000 a year. This was accomplished through a partnership with the VC Energy Alliance, which facilitated its upgrades." And Paul Blatts here from the City of Ojai to win this category. That's my congratulations on to the rest of the Ojai City Council members.
I will, thank you. We have our meeting tonight, so I'll pass.
Well, I'm very happy to bring this one forward, and it's for the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance as the large organization. I see Cheryl Collerts here, our executive director. VCREA, the alliance, is a joint powers agency that has eight members, County of Ventura, Cities of Oxnard, Thousand Oaks, San Bueno Ventura, Camarillo, Fillmore, Santa Paula, and the Ventura County Community College District and Ventura Regional Sanitation District. I think that some of that's changed, but.
Unified School District.
Unified School District, yes, Ventura, that's right. It was formed in 2001, and it was really in response to the 2001 energy crisis, the rolling brownouts, when a group of leaders of us got together and said, you know, "We really need to look at how we can look at conserving energy and doing a better job for our region to protect our businesses and help them and support our community during energy crisis." So it was, that was the origin of it. It is focused on energy efficiency, renewable resource development, sustainable energy efforts in our entire county. Through its work, the VCREA provides training and information-based programs to promote energy efficiency. And the goal of the program was, again, to develop and demonstrate a coordinated process and cooperation across boundaries for all local government in the county, and to support our businesses, to work together, to assess, identify, prioritize, and prepare for funding of green building projects and retrofitting of our energy systems to make us a cleaner and more efficient, both in our government facilities that are owned by the taxpayers and to help our businesses. The implementation of the energy alliance has been greatly enhanced as the projects have moved forward, and we've had accountable and ability to express to our partners, who are the Gas Company and Edison, that we have saved kilowatt-hours and we have made a difference in that energy use through the years. So it's been very instrumental in helping its members and also its, the business community. We have a business community advisory board, a TAC, that basically works with us, and we have, we produce lots of training programs and businesses, for businesses, and literature, public information pieces that are provided to the community, an annual report that talks about those kilowatt savings and what it means to the taxpayers in those savings. And so it's been a very successful work of a joint powers agreement without calling on those members to put money into a general fund. It's all been through just good cooperative collaborative work with a small but mighty staff, and Cheryl has been the executive director since its inception, and she, and probably with one and a half to two at the most, other staff people. So low administrative management of it, but very solid returns on investment. So it's an excellent organization.
Thank you very much. And our next category is Climate Action Heroes. We have three nominees in this category, and the first one's going to be read by Supervisor Parks.
And the nominee is Kit Stortz. If you could come down. Kit is a freelance writer for the Ventura County Reporter, VC Reporter, and has written about numerous environmental issues over the last few years. Some of his recent stories have dealt with drought-proofing Ventura County in an era of climate change. He is also an active blogger on his website, A Change in the Wind, where he broaches the topic of climate change, along with numerous other subjects that rotate around greenhouse gas. His website, while being educational, is also riddled with humor, and he allows one to laugh, but also learn about the underlying causes of climate change. And Kit just recently returned from a vacation hiking the Appalachia Trail. That sounds really neat, to be able to do that, and that will surely be a source of another environmental story, no doubt. And Supervisor Long will read the next one.
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to introduce the nominee. It's Dr. Donald Rodriguez. And he is here. Thank you for being here, Professor. He's a professor at Cal State Channel Islands, where he's chair of the Environmental Science and Resource Management Program. Dr. Rodriguez teaches natural resource management principles, ESRM capstone, environmental history, the national park, and a field studies course in Mexico honoring Ramsar sites in the state of Peninsulo. Professor Rodriguez's research interests are divided between urban, well-done interface issues, it's a prime spot for that, and minority involvement with protected areas and coastal management problems in the U.S. and abroad. The professor has taught all aspects of park protected area management, including courses and park management principles, planning, and management practices. Works closely with the National Park Service, two units. Of the Park Service in Ventura County, the Channel Islands National Park, I'm sorry, and the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area, thank you, Rep. [inaudible]. To create a Park University learning community on campus that includes collaborative research, internship, and unique opportunities for the Channel Islands students. Dr. Rodriguez has been instrumental in the students' lives by helping them think and reason about the many facets of environmental policy and how they relate to daily life. Good to have you here.
And the final nominee is Zeke Barlow, who, after being nominated, ended up moving out of the area. So we're going to read very quickly. Zeke, up until recently, was a writer for the Ventura County Star, where he covered environmental issues and policies throughout Ventura County and beyond. He educated his readers about the issue of stormwater pollution, sea level rise, and the underlying causes of environmental degradation and climate change. He's recently relocated back to his home in Virginia, be with us today if that wasn't the case. He's accepted a position at Virginia Tech University in the Office of Public Affairs. And the winner in this highly competitive category is Kit Stortz. Congratulations. And our next, our next category is Schools and School Districts. And the first school nomination is Ventura Charter Schools Arts and Global Awareness. We have representatives here. Thank you very much. Coming down. Hey, how are you? And, "Since 2009, the Ventura Earth Day Eco Fest has become a tremendous showing of community support and involvement. The free event celebrates the local and global environment and reflects the diversity of its community. On September, on Saturday, April 14th, the event was held at the Ventura Beach Promenade under cloudy skies, and yet over 6,000 community members passed through the course of day. It was a great day, and I didn't get to catch you there, but it was really a great, great event, lots of people, and it was very cold in the morning, though, really cold. It was blowing like crazy. The education pavilion provided information on numerous ways the public could celebrate Earth Day every day in their homes and gardens. There even was a green auto expo that showcased the new environmentally-friendly automobiles along with good, green driving habits. All this was combined with music and entertainment that made for a wonderful, family-friendly event. All the proceeds from the event go towards the funding enrichment programs for kindergarten through eighth-grade classes. The parents and volunteers at this school have grown this event from a small, well-focused environmental event in 2009 to a partnership with the City of Ventura to become one of the premier events in the city." And congratulations on your nomination, Supervisor Long. We'll read the next nomination. We have three schools.
Thank you, yes. And this is for the Canale Valley Unified School District. I'm not sure there's a representative here because they are testing at the school this week, so I don't think we have them. So, okay, but in an effort to represent them, we're going to, I'll read this, that they're nominated because they have worked to reduce energy consumption and save money at the Canale Valley Unified School District, implementing an energy conservation education program. Rick Freed, the energy education manager, worked under the guidance of a consulting firm, Energy Education, Inc., to develop a people-oriented energy management program that was designed to become self-sustaining within four years. It's a comprehensive program which promotes conservation of electricity, gas, and water.
And that's, yeah, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Many measures are being taken to reduce consumption mechanically. However, additional savings also come from reductions due to the increased energy awareness of the faculty, staff, and students. Program emphasizes reduction during unoccupied times and promoting behavior change from energy consumers to energy savers. The guidelines have allowed all the campuses to participate in the program and save money on the utilities that can be transferred to programs that directly affect education in the classroom. And that's the Canale School efforts. Supervisor Parks, you're up.
Okay, thank you. And I get to do Oak Park Unified School District, even though both of the school districts are licensed. Oak Park Unified School District, and we have Barry Tallick and Kayla Tietzman here. The Oak Park Unified School District believes it's important that they serve as community leaders in the area of environmental awareness and sensitivity, and they have been. In addition to incorporating environmental education into their instructional program, they are working to serve as an example for their students and community as a whole. The Oak Park Unified School District Board has adopted principles and practices as sustainable, renewable, energy, and resource-efficient programs. These have been incorporated into its facilities and in its maintenance to ensure a safe and healthy environment for students and staff, while focusing on using sustainable, non-toxic, and environmentally-friendly products, which include only using organic fertilizers on their landscape turf, adopting integrated pest management system, and using only eco-safe pest reduction products, and using cleaning supplies that are made from naturally eco-safe substances, and purchasing paper that has a high recycled content. All this combines for a safer, healthier learning environment that is mutually beneficial for all. I know just this weekend, they had their movie and dinner for Earth Week, which is a tremendous success. The Environmental Education and Awareness Committee has overseen these programs, along with special events and programs throughout the year that highlight the benefit of these environmental programs. This committee has been instrumental in keeping the Oak Park Unified School District moving forward in the field of environmental education. That has resulted in numerous awards and accolades over the years, and an enlightened student body, too.
How would, how would you like to be on the committee and have to decide between all of these great nominees across the board? And the winner is the Ventura Charter School of Arts and Global Awareness. And our final award category is Public Outreach and Education, and Supervisor Parks will read the first nominee.
Thank you. City of Thousand Oaks, Thousand Oaks Green Business Certification Program. We have our mayor, Jackie Erwin, here, and John Brooks. The Green Business Certification Program, as a first of its kind, the City of Thousand Oaks incentivizes and rewards small and medium-sized Thousand Oaks businesses that demonstrate a substantial and purposeful commitment to environmental stewardship through water conservation, solid waste reduction, energy conservation, and pollution prevention. Managed by the Public Works Department, it offers incentives and assistance to encourage businesses to implement actions that protect, preserve, and improve the environment above and beyond just the basic compliance. Businesses that meet the program's high criteria will be certified as, quote, "green" businesses and marketed as such to the Thousand Oaks community. Earning a green business designation means that the business has taken a proactive approach to health of the greater Thousand Oaks community and contributes to the future success of other businesses, too. This is a common sense certification program individually tailored to each applicant. The purpose of the program is to help Thousand Oaks businesses become more efficient and competitive in addition to being environmentally friendly. And we just heard about some of those businesses that actually get more business because they are. The program has flexibility built in that recognizes every business is unique and that some of the green criteria may not apply to every business. As a result, up to 35% of the application is customizable, is that a word? And allowing businesses to be creative and efficient while maintaining the environmental standards held up by the certified businesses in California. So congratulations, Thousand Oaks.
And the next nominee is the Ventura Chamber of Commerce Green Task Force, represented by Sean Dyer and Diane DiMali. And we have somebody else also there, right? How about the name of the third person who's here?
Courtney Lindbergh.
Courtney.
Thank you, Courtney. "In collaboration with the City of Ventura and local agencies dedicated to a greener environment, the mission of the Ventura Chamber of Commerce Green Task Force is to empower the local business community to work green through chamber-led community projects and educational incentives that will positively impact the environment. The guiding principles are: drive economic development through green principles and sustainability; develop community-based projects and events to raise awareness and generate support for environmental concerns and sustainable practices; create green business practices to be adopted and used by the chamber and local businesses; act as a central repository for information for local programs; and create green business tools and opportunities for information for local programs; and create green business tools and opportunities to educate and support local businesses. The, congratulations. Part of what's going on here, Supervisor Foye was supposed to be reading some nominations, and we're adjusting as a result of his absence.
And Zorgo.
I have the, what's that? Yeah, and Supervisor Zorgo, so that's right. I have the pleasure of reading Simi Valley Living Green Expo. Do we have any representative from Simi Valley? We do here, right? And your name is?
Brian Shaw.
Okay, Brian Shaw. So last year's edition of the Simi Valley Living Green Expo was dozens of green vendors, children's activities at Planet Pals Play Zone, bicycle safety rodeo, live entertainment and music stage, a collection of events, free document shredding. And the City of Simi Valley presents its third annual Living Green Expo at the Simi Valley Town Center on Saturday, September 29th, 2012, promises to be even bigger and better than years past. And so congratulations. And so the winner, I'm proud to announce, and it's our last, and we'll ask everybody to come down, the nominee or winner that received a prize, the winner here is the Thousand Oaks Green Business Certification Program. Now, before I ask everybody to come down for a picture, I just would announce that our next agenda item, if you're interested and would like to stay around, is a presentation to the Board of Supervisors about what we're doing here at the Board to make progress on our climate change action plan ourselves. So that's our next agenda item, but if we, supervisors, and if all the nominees will come down for a picture, please. We really appreciate it.
Mayor, thank you for being here, Mayor. Okay, even though I didn't read it.
Folks, I'm going to move you, shift you all over this way, so between that podium and between you go up on those steps, here we go.
That's a great idea. I think that's nice to hear.
I think you're a little too short.
Sure.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, one, two, three.
Good.
Thank you all.
I'm glad to be here.
Thank you.
We know that everything will all be the best we can.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, one, two, three.
Great. Good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
They're going to celebrate the awards.
A little passively.
There they go.
Okay, so is that a receiving file or are we just okay on that? Roberto?
We'll do it as I see it.
Receiving file? Yeah, thank you. So we make a motion for us, Steve. Okay, let's take it.
Everybody laugh.
Okay, do it if you're on.
Oh, is that right?
All right, we got a PowerPoint coming up. There it is. Well, good afternoon, Chair, Board members. Mr. Powers, for the record, my name's Jeff Burke with the County CEO's office. The item for you today is receiving file of the annual climate protection plan and the climate protection activities report for those activities that the county has undertaken the prior 12 months in an attempt to attain our stated greenhouse gas emissions reduction of 15% below our 2005 base year inventory by the year 2020. Today's presentation, and I'd like to introduce Ann Hewitt, our consultant from Anacapa Consulting, who I will tell you put most of this report together for us, working with our climate team, Kelly Catena, Alejandro Teles, and also I'd like to introduce Rachel Smith with California State University, Channel Islands. She is our intern, new this year, and I'll be talking a little bit more about that here in a second. Rachel Scott. I am very sorry about that. I don't have that written down. I'm very sorry. Today's.
Do you have Sean Anderson as a teacher?
Not yet.
Yeah. He's a good writer.
Oh, today's presentation, you don't have to see me for all that long. I'm going to recap the accomplishments of 2011, then Ann will get up and talk about our footprint, our '05 to 2010 greenhouse gas emissions footprint and inventory, and then I'll get back up and kind of wrap up, talk about where we're going to go into the future. So what have we accomplished this last fiscal year, or this last calendar year? Couple of things we've talked about in the past, I'll just update you on. One of them, and the largest thing, is our partnership with Southern Cal Edison. As you know, we received a $1 million grant for administrative purposes from the Southern California Edison Company, and we have used that money to produce most of what you'll be receiving today, the report that is. And most of the activities that we've accomplished in this last year have been made available through that grant that we received from Southern Cal Edison. Also, we continue to do the work with our smaller partner cities, Santa Paula, Fillmore, Port Juaniemi, and Ojai, in the completion of our EECBG grant. We spent about just under $900,000 or under $1 million of federal money to actually do some projects, boots on the ground, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in those four small cities, as well as the County of Ventura. One of the things that your board just approved a while back was for Ready to install a 1-megawatt solar power plant out in District 1, Moore Park, to help offset some of the costs that are incurred from our groundwater pumping and the running of our water installations. And Ann will talk a great deal about that in the presentation a little bit in the future. One of the things we were able to do this year, a part of the direction that your board gave us, was not only to calculate what our greenhouse gas inventories are, what our emissions are, but also to have that registered and submitted to the Climate Registry so that we can have a certified number. We are doing that as we speak. We've actually updated and submitted numbers from '05 to 2010 to Climate Registry. We should have those certified very quickly, and we'll be submitting our 2011 as well here in the very near future. That is something that we've been able to do as well. Kelly's helped out quite a lot on that. You know, part of the Southern Cal Edison grant, when we were awarded that grant, one of the things that I asked your board and you gave approval for was a fixed-term, part-time position, of which that is Kelly, and she has taken the bull by the horns and really worked hard and diligent to get those numbers up to Climate, along with Alejandro as well, to get those numbers up to the Climate Registry so we can have a certified number and become part of the whole state's numbers. And the last but not least was Rachel Scott. And one of the directions from your board was to work with Channel Islands to get a student intern, and Rachel is that intern. She's been with us now for this last semester, and she has helped us tremendously on just calculating the numbers, making sure that our numbers, yes, sir, to make sure that our numbers were accurate and updated, and that, and she's worked very closely with Ann to ensure that our inventories are correct. So I appreciate her help, and it was, I hope that we can continue that internship with the Cal State, Channel Islands in the future, because it was a great, it was a win-win for all of us. Rachel got some really good experience, boots on the ground, working with greenhouse gas emissions and inventories, and we were able to pull from her knowledge from the school to help us with our calculations as well. Additionally, I'm going to flip my page. Couple of things we've also done is we've taken a look at our policies. Part of our climate protection plan was to take a look at some of the policies that we have here in the county to make sure that they not only hinder us from reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, but also encourage us to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Some of the policies that we're currently working with is our facilities policy. We have a draft policy that we're considering implementing very quickly here that would require the county, or it would require the county to, as we design our facilities, new construction, remodels, additions, that we would take a look at the footprint, the greenhouse gas footprint, and the emissions from that construction, and make sure that we are not only abiding by Title 24, which we were required to do, but also go a step beyond that and require some additional reductions in our, in our emissions. Yes.
That means you're going to retrofit the old buildings, or as you add to?
It would be retro, whenever we were to do some program, whether it's a retrofitting or an addition or new construction, we'd take a look at that construction and we'd say, okay, Title 24 requires this, Title 24 Part 6 requires this. What can we do, go beyond that to help reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and our carbon footprint? And we're wrestling with, okay, well, what's the ROI on that, and what's the benefit and the cost going to be? So we're still tweaking that policy just a little bit. We should have that policy implemented here very quickly and get that out so that as we move forward, we'll be able to ensure that we meet our 2020 target. Some of the other things that we've done this past year, working with VCREA, a good partner of ours, and Cheryl's here, and again, with the, I don't want to, I can't stress enough Southern Cal Edison's partnership and all that I'm talking about, they have helped us along the way, and the million-dollar grant that we received has helped us. I just, I can't say enough about their partnership with us. But working with VCREA, we have developed training that we have provided to county staff as well as city staff on compliance for Title 24. So that code compliance officers, when they go out to take a look at the new code and how they're going to apply that new code to new construction, remodels, what have you, in the commercial and residential, they have training on what it is they're looking for, so that they can go out there and do a good job. We've already completed numerous trainings throughout the county. We've done it here in Ventura, we've done it in East County, so that everyone has an opportunity to come to the training. And we're also getting ready to roll out some training for staff, county staff. So, and some of the ideas we're throwing out there and starting to pull their curriculum together, so that when new hires come to the county and they go sit through the new hire orientation, we'd have some curriculum for them on how they can reduce their greenhouse, their carbon footprint, not only here when they're on campus working, but when they're even at home, and just things they can do to help reduce their carbon footprint. So we're getting ready to roll that out as well. And that would not be just be a one-time training, but we'd have the curriculum established so that we can have refreshers on a yearly basis. We're talking about having a program, it's called Pace Setters Program, where we would identify, and this is a new program, it's kind of cool. We'd identify staff at the different agencies that we have, who would be our ambassadors for energy reduction and greenhouse gas emissions reduction. And they would meet on a quarterly basis and kind of get a curriculum and go back out into the workplace and start to work with staff, boots on the ground, to get the new curriculum out there and kind of encourage people to be more energy-friendly and just, you know, kind of rah-rah with the staff. And we think that'll be a really, we think it's going to be a really good program. We think that it's really going to help reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, our carbon footprint here at the county, because it's, it wouldn't be, it's more of a bottom-up than top-down type of a policy, and that's what we're kind of looking for. We're trying to get the buy-in from staff that we need to, this is a good thing to do, and this is one way we think we'd be able to do that, is actually have staff talking with staff directly, not a manager telling them what to do. It'd be staff, talking to staff. One of the big things, one of the big obstacles that we faced as we, in the past, as we put together our greenhouse gas inventories, was trying to compile the data. We had five or six different databases that, you name it, from different agencies, that had the emissions factors that we needed, so we can compile one county greenhouse gas inventory. Well, through the Southern Cal Edison grant, we were able to purchase a piece of software, FM Systems is the software, whereby we will be able to store all of our facilities data, not only own facilities, but our facilities that we lease for all these agencies. We're working with all the agencies, so we'll have one repository for all the data that we need. We will be able to, through the use of a, I'll call it a sister system, maybe it's not so much a sister system, but ECOVA is another database that we will be able to use, whereby all of our resource, our water, power, natural gas, utilize, our uses of, I'm trying to think of the word I used there, but all of our, the consumption of those would be stored in this one database, and it would be seamlessly input into FM Systems so that, and I'm oversimplifying here, we'd be able to push a button and we'd be able to find out what our greenhouse gas inventory is per location. So we can go and say, we know this is what the government center is using on an annual basis for natural gas. This is what the government center is using for electricity. This is what the harbor is using for whatever that resource may be, and we can do that across the board for all of the facilities.
Jeff, Michael.
Thank you, Chair. I just think this is an extraordinary goal and accomplishment. So every piece of property owned or leased by the county is going to be in one system now, which we haven't had before, and then all, yeah, isn't that, yeah, I mean, for all the departments out there who, you know, understand what the struggle is like, this is a big deal. And then to be able to understand their energy consumption at each of those sites and then add them up is just, is extraordinary. So congratulations.
Yeah, it provides the analytics that we haven't had in the past to be able to analyze. Are we overusing in some of the resources, some of the buildings? We'll be able to determine that based on these two pieces of equipment or these two pieces of software. I know one of the frustrations that I had, and this, I know, one of the frustrations I had when I started down this path of collecting, getting the inventory together, and I, Ann as well, that's why she's so happy, was just trying to, you know, and just trying to gather all of that data. That was such a headache, and it was so hard to do, and we thought we'd have it, but, oh, nope, there's this building way out here, nobody knew about it at the time, okay, now we have to, and so I know, and I, I know there was some frustration from your board on why is it taking so long to get that data together, and that was part of the frustration, it was very hard to get it. This system is going to address that obstacle, and moving forward is going to be very easy to, and that's what has helped us this last year, 2011. Now that we've identified it all with the GSA staff, PMA, HCA, you name it, PWA staff, everybody, we've been able to gather that data, and we're now starting to load it into FM Systems so that next year, when we come back, we will have a report that's coming out of FM Systems. We intend to go live with that system or start to utilize that system July 1st, so we'd have one whole fiscal year of data.
You know, if I might, it's really helpful for the purposes of what we're looking at now, but for
Edison Grant, we were able to purchase a piece of software, FM Systems is the software, whereby we will be able to store all of our facilities data. Not only own facilities, but our facilities that we lease for all these agencies. We're working with all the agencies, so we'll have one repository for all the data that we need. We will be able to, through the use of a, I'll call it a sister system, maybe it's not so much a sister system, but ICova is another database that we will be able to use whereby all of our resource, our water, power, natural gas, utilize, our uses of, I'm trying to think of the word I used there, but all of our, the consumption of those would be stored in this one database, and it would be seamlessly input into FM Systems so that, and I'm oversimplifying here, we'd be able to push a button and we'd be able to find out what our greenhouse gas inventory is per location. So we can go and say, we know this is what the government center is using on an annual basis for natural gas. This is what the government center is using for electricity. This is what the harbor is using for whatever that resource may be. And we can do that across the board for all of the facilities.
Jeff Michaelson.
Thank you, Chair. I just think this is an extraordinary goal and accomplishment. So every piece of property owned or leased by the county is going to be in one system now, which we haven't had before, and then all, yeah, isn't that, yeah, I mean, for all the departments out there who've, you know, understand what the struggle is like, this is a big deal. And then to be able to understand their energy consumption at each of those sites, and then add them up is just, is extraordinary. So congratulations.
Yeah, it provides the analytics that we haven't had in the past to be able to analyze. Are we overusing in some of, some of the resources, some of the buildings? We'll be able to determine that based on these, these two pieces of equipment, or these two pieces of software. I know one of the frustrations that I had, this, I know, one of the frustrations I had when I started down this path of collecting, getting the inventory together, and I know Ann as well, that's why she's so happy, was just trying to, you know, and just trying to gather all of that data. That was such a headache, and it was so hard to do, and we thought we'd have it, but oh, nope, there's this building way out here. Nobody knew about it at the time. Okay, now we have to, and so I know, and I, I know there was some frustration from your board on why is it taking so long to get that data together? And that was part of the frustration, it was very hard to get it. This system is going to address that obstacle, and moving forward is going to be very easy to, and that's what has helped us this last year, 2011. Now that we've identified it all with the use, GSA staff, PMA, HCA, you name it, PWA staff, everybody, we've been able to gather that data, and we're now starting to load it into FM Systems so that next year, when we come back, we will have a report that's coming out of FM Systems. We intend to go live with that system or start to utilize that system July 1st, so we'd have one whole fiscal year of data.
You know, if I might, it's really helpful for the purposes of what we're looking at now, but for other purposes, you know, having that inventory available in one document when we're looking for more efficiencies in our space, for example, or properties that we can utilize for different purposes, knowing what we have out there is going to make those decisions more informed and better.
It's a multi-use.
Tremend, and even just gathering the data, so we have it all in one, right, all on one big spreadsheet, and we're going to load it into FM Systems, but even just gathering that all. We've already been able to see the synergy of doing that. Oh, hey, we're talking about leasing a space in, pick a town. No, we own a facility, and we've got 3,000 square feet that are empty. Let's utilize our government building rather than go lease. Saves, it's, the efficiency, the efficiencies are just astronomical using that system. It's a great system.
And it's surprising it took this long to get there. Not how long your staff took, but that for many years we didn't have that in one place is rather surprising. I'm glad we have it now.
And it touches, it touches with our insurance, for insurance purposes, risk management. There's so many different functions that touch this, that will touch this system that are going to benefit from this system. I can't speak highly enough of FM Systems, what's going to do for us. The other thing, some of the other things that we're doing, ITSD has reviewed all of their operations, and they've begun to, they've begun to take a look at the way they cool, the cool chiller, cool rooms. I'm going to get that wrong, and Mike Petter will probably come down and correct me later. But, you know, we're increasing the heat in our server rooms by just a couple of degrees, and we're finding that they're saving a tremendous amount of electricity. The cost, costs less because we don't use as much electricity, but it reduces our greenhouse gas emissions, which is a great thing. Also, we've begun to utilize a lot of teleconferencing. So one, we're not driving all over the county. We can use teleconferencing to handle our meetings, so that's another benefit that we've seen. Whoops, went the wrong way. I'm almost done. We've begun to take a look at the fleet. We really want to tackle the fleet. The fleet, we know there are efficiencies to be had in the fleet, in the mobility of our fleet. And one of the things we've begun is we've established a task force to take a look at fleet, how we utilize the fleet, and how we can better utilize the fleet to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. You know, we, Dennis Scobardo and his team implemented the motor pool, centralized motor pool a few years back. We're not seeing the utilization of that centralized motor pool that we'd like to see. So we're taking a look at what, what are some of the stressors on that? What's causing some of that non-utilization of the, of the fleet, centralized motor pool? So we're beginning to take it, to tackle that situation and see what we can do to better and utilize our, the fleet that we have. We have a lot of, and I forget the number, over, about 1,200 vehicles in the county fleet. And if we can manage that a little bit better, the savings in greenhouse gas emissions just are, they're there to be had, and I think just taking a really hard look at it, we're going to find it. Our trees, you know, we have over 1,300 trees in the inventory.
How many trees?
1,300 trees in our inventory. And we're beginning to look at how we utilize our trees, how we manage our trees, when we plant trees, what type of trees are we planting? So we're tackling having, establishing a tree policy for the county of Ventura. And we're beginning to look at what other policies are out there and how, how it might work with the county operations. But it makes a big difference in the trees that you plant. If you can plant a tree that will capture the greenhouse gas emissions rather, more efficiently than some other type of tree, and one that's indigenous to this area, well, then it's better to go that route. So we're taking a look at that. GSA already does a very good job, but we're kind, we're taking another look at that, which is sharpening our pencils and see what we can do moving forward.
And I might note that a third of those trees, if that's all you have, are at Santa Rosa Park. We planted, there were 350 planted, we planted about another 100. But I, my emphasis on, on looking at the trees, and I'm glad we finally incorporated it, is that not just on county property, but what we can do with our RMA, with our planning department for the public, so that we incentivize tree planting and the correct kind of trees that we plant. So they're, they're actually good for the air.
And I think, bear with me one second. And there's much more. I'm not going to bore you with, when I started, sat down, I, I thought, wow, what have we done over the last year? I don't know how much, and I wrote like a page and a half of bullet points of what we've done the past year. I thought, wow, we've really, for, for the county, the big group that we have, we've, we've done a lot. I'm very happy, very proud of the work that we've done. At this point, though, I am going to, and I'll step back up here in a second, talk about what we're, what we're looking at doing in the future. I kind of already touched on that, on some of the policies that we're taking a look at when it comes to trees, or vehicles, or facilities. But I'm going to turn it over to Ann right now. She's going to talk about our 2010 inventory. Yeah.
Thanks. Ann, I'm Ann Hewitt with Annecapac Consulting. Thank you for listening to me today. And I want to congratulate the team on all the work that they've done, the climate protection team. This has been a very good year, and a very busy year. Mostly what I'm going to be talking about is probably a little less exciting than what Jeff gets to talk about. I do the numbers. So over the last year, we've completed the 2009 and 10 calendar year inventories, and as Jeff was saying, this is quite an onerous task, because we have to go through and look at every single building. Is it still there? Was it not there? We mostly identify that by whether there was an electricity bill. I'm really looking forward. It's limiting for me, but I'm really looking forward to not having to do that anymore. The biggest change that we've made, and it's somewhat technical, is that we've changed the emission factors for the entire inventory. When we first developed the inventory for you, we, Southern California Edison reported their emissions to the California Climate Action Registry. And so based on that verified emission data, we would know what their emission factor was, how many pounds of CO2 they generated for every megawatt hour that they produced of electricity. And they always tracked much lower than the state. Edison actually has a very clean energy source. It's primarily natural gas. They don't have any coal in their mix, so they, and they have quite a few renewables, so they tend to be much cleaner than the rest of the state. But when the Climate Registry, the California Registry switched to the Climate Registry, and there was uncertainty over the ARB, Edison stopped reporting, and they still don't report. And so that left us within a conundrum, because if we went to the emission factor for the state for, for these years, all of a sudden we'd have a huge bump up. So on the, on advice from the registry and discussion with the Climate Registry, we've gone back to 2005 and just used the state emission factors. We are going to be talking to the registry, Ann Edison, about getting their numbers back in, because we think that this is not a true estimate of what your real emissions are. It's about at least 15% higher than it normally would be. It's a technical issue, but in case you start looking at the numbers and you see a big change, it's because of this. So everything has bumped up a little bit. What hasn't bumped up is how much electricity you have to reduce, and how much natural gas you have to stop using. It doesn't really change anything on the ground. It just changes the accounting. There's nobody doing this for me.
He is right.
There. Am I right? Okay, yeah, there I am. So these, this is the history of the inventory for the county, the totals. This includes electricity, natural gas vehicles, and a few small sources, propane, and some medical gases. So as you can see, between 2005 and 2008, you were generally trending up, and this was what we reported to you before. We knew that this was happening. 2008 can kind of be seen as the zenith, the halcyon year, or the apex, which is what I've called it. I mean, if we think back to 2008, the economy was still in pretty good shape. Everything was growing. And there were some specific factors that led to this increase that I'll talk about a little bit as we go on. But, but as we go now from 2008 down, we see that we're, we're trending down. This is the direction that we want to go in. We're still slightly higher than we were in 2005, but given that, given some of the growth pressures, this is actually a very good situation. And as long as the county continues to take the kind of aggressive measures it has, this green arrow will continue to go down. We can't promise that it'll go down in a straight diagonal line. It's probably going to be more like a stair step, a couple of years with two big projects will bring you down quickly. A year with not so many big projects, you may kind of stabilize. And I think probably 2011 may wind up being sort of a stable year, but with some pressures then to, to move forward with the reductions later. So the biggest changes that, that I can see for 2008, why 2008 was so high, was that, that was the year when you replaced imported water with local water. And I'm going to go into this in some detail, because it really is significant for the county. And that accounts for about three-quarters of the increased electricity use. The vehicle emissions increased, but again, if you think about what 2008 was like, I mean, that was the end of a growth period for the county, so it's not surprising. And 2008, 2009 is when you start to see the impacts of the policies that your board requested on, on vehicles. So after 2008, they continued to go down. And then there were health and safety facilities that came on board. There was the Santa Paula Hospital, fire headquarters, the juvenile justice complex also came in, during that time period. And the context, I think the context we all have to think about here is that this was a pre-recession economy. So that can account also for some of that change. But I do want to talk about water, because it is responsible for so much of the increase. Those of us who drive up and down the I-5 occasionally, hopefully in our low-emission vehicle cars, see this water aqueduct facility on the side. I've seen it many times. When I first came to California, I thought, wow, what's that? It's just, that lifts water 800 feet, and we think that that's pretty spectacular. And we use a lot of that water. This is the, but that's the small one, because there's actually a larger one, which is the Tehachapi Crossing. That, that one is not. The Tehachapi Crossing lifts water 1,926 feet. So if you think about that previous visual, it's almost, you know, it's more than double that size. It's all underground, so we don't see it. But it uses, that Tehachapi pump uses the most water and any, most electricity of any source in California. That's the largest user of electricity. And this is what one of the pumps looks like. And so that's, those are the kinds of pumps that bring us imported water. And this is one of our local pumps. This is actually one of our larger pumps. And I couldn't get it, I couldn't get ready to go stand beside it. I didn't have time. But if you look in the back, you'll see there are some signs. This is a very small pump. And this is what, this is what's pumping our water. So relatively speaking, we're using much less electricity. So in terms of the kilowatt-hours per acre foot of water, when we buy state water, there's 2,500-plus kilowatt-hours. When we buy local water, there's 1,700, so much smaller. The problem is that when we buy water, we don't pay for the electricity. It's not in our footprint. We just buy water. It's called embedded energy. We don't, it doesn't show up in our footprint. So as a result, our county emissions are up, because we're pumping that local water. We didn't do that before. So our county emissions are up about 2.5% from this, just this single source. On the other hand, state emissions are down 2,435 metric tons. So even though it's worse for the county carbon footprint, it's much better for the state footprint for us to be using local water. And so when, when we were talking about this with the climate protection team, they said, well, you know, so who gets the credit? Well, if the state doesn't send the water down, they get the credit. Our emissions go up, their emissions go down. But we also get some credit, because our local water cost is 27% of imported water. So it costs less to use local water at this point in time. So this is an example of how, how carbon and, and financial accounting kind of go together. There is a benefit. It's not a carbon benefit, but there is a cost benefit. But certainly, our emissions are up because we use this, this local water. Now, the stabilizing factor in all of this, because we have new buildings, you know, we've used imported water, the stabilizing factor is really all of the energy efficiency projects that your board has approved and that have gone on over the last 10 years, with the help of VCREA, with the help of Edison, and with lots of hard work here in the county, with GSA, with healthcare agency and others. So every year going forward, we know that our county carbon footprint is going to be 5.6% smaller than it would have been. And that doesn't go away. It's, it's not like this year we save 5.6, but next year we don't. It's permanently out of the, out of the environment. We are not putting those emissions into the air anymore. And that means savings are at least $800,000 a year, again, going forward. These are avoided costs that have occurred as a result of the actions that your board has taken. So this is a situation where we, there is no, we are definitely winning on carbon, and there are certainly some savings with, with energy efficiency. And so now, unless there are any questions, I think Jeff is going to talk about what we're doing going forward.
Any questions? Thank you, Jeff.
And as you know, Reddy is addressing that, as we speak, the cost of the energy and the cost of the importing the water. He's beginning to pump more locally, and he's been before your board, and you have approved the solar installation for him out in Moore Park. He's looking at solar installations out in Piru, and we, as a county, GSA, we're looking at solar installations on our own facilities. As you know, we've, we've entered into some power purchase agreements for our Sataco yard, our Vanguard building. We're looking at additional power purchase agreements, and possibly also our own facilities, solar power facilities, so that we can address not only the costs and stabilize our costs for energy and reduce our costs for energy, but also to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and our carbon footprint. So it's a win-win from that standpoint. Not only do we, we save money, but we also reduce our carbon footprint. So that's some of the things that we're looking for going forward on a large scale that will really have an impact. I've talked about the policy changes and how we're looking at some of the other things, but to really affect our carbon footprint, we need to do something differently, and that right now looks like solar power and, and install, and solar installations around the county. We continue to do our lighting and energy efficiency projects. Every time GSA goes out, or HCA goes out, or PWA, or you name it, they go out, and they're going to remodel something, or, or construct something, or change something. They're looking at how more efficient can we be? If it's a T-whatever light, can we put in a T-better light? If it's R19 installation, can we put in an R35 installation? We do that on an ongoing basis, and that's what's getting us to our reduction that we have today, the 5.6% reduction in our 800,000, it's $800,000 savings a year, and that's not going to go away. As the cost of our energy goes up, as Edison raises our costs, the cost for each kilowatt hour, which they are doing every year, that $800,000 savings increases every year, because that's money we would be spending, instead of $800,000, next year it'd be $900,000, it'd be a million dollars that we'd be spending for that same bucket of energy that we'd be buying.
Jeff, when you get all the, the units that we have, all the buildings and so forth, are we going to get the savings of the cost in dollars? What are we going to save?
And that's, and yes, yes. And that's where we got the $800,000. We had to do that through Excel, but we'd be able to, you bet, that would come right out of there. Yes, yes, supervisors, sure would. And it's, and it's, there's not without challenges. We are facing challenges moving forward. The growth of operations, the vehicle emissions that we're looking at, you know, so there are some challenges facing us, but I think we have a great group of individuals here at the county. We're focused on, and I, I have to say, Paul Grozgold and GSA, his group, I get emails, I won't say daily, but, hey, here's an article I read. Hey, here's something that's going on here. Here's something that's going on here. Let's take a look at that. And, and we get together and we talk about, hey, how can we implement this here? And that's how a lot of the policies, I've talked about, the tree policy, or the facilities policy. I mean, it's us getting together in a room and deciding, well, what can we do? Or a subcommittee getting together to figure out what it is we can do, partnering with VCREA, APCD, Mike and his group over there, working with them as well to see what we can do moving forward. And I think we've got a great team, and we're, we're making great, we're making great progress, and we will continue to make great progress. And with that, I think I'm going to, one more, any questions?
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions, Jeff?
I do have a question, but I'll combine it with a comment at this point in time.
Comments, questions?
But the, my comment is, I appreciate, you know, this, this reminds me a little bit of trying to adopt the culture of, of constant improvement that we're doing. And this, when we first were bringing this up, I have to tell you, there was, there was bureaucratic resistance, right? And a big part of it was, we couldn't establish a baseline until, you know, we, it was very difficult to establish a baseline. And because it was difficult, people didn't want to do it at all. And we made some rough estimates of our, our baseline and moved forward. Now you really have something here, being able to identify everything. So as, as our CEO, Mr. Power, said, that's a real accomplishment, you know, to be able to have us quantify all of this. The other thing that I wanted to say- The other thing that I wanted to say is that I really do appreciate the sense of partnership that I'm feeling with the CEO's office and with GSA. But I have significant interactions with GSA where I, I really get that feeling that they are on board and trying to, trying to really get this energy thing moving, so that's great. The thing that I want to, to ask about a little bit is it's, it's not exactly carbon emissions reduction, although there may be, it isn't from the standpoint of water savings. But, you know, the state is starting to mandate almost an anti-lawn policy, you know, and we are a target. We have a huge amount of lawn here, and I, you know, and I don't know whether Paul Grossgold is rolling his eyes right now or not, but it is something that's, it's going to be increasingly on the radar screen, is, you know, is us moving to natural planting that, you know, would not require, you know, anywhere near as much water as the grass that we have at this point in time. And I know there's a whole issue of the design of the building and the, you know, and the sort of sense and look, but it's-
Little bit of time.
But it is, it is a, it is something that while we're on this, and I think at it to at least some extent, we would be pumping less water up for that. I see Paul starting to come down here.
Yeah.
Michael, when did it come?
No, I was going to say, Paul has shown me, they do a lot with reclaimed water and so forth to really lower that cost, but it's a good point.
We do, we, well, we pump water on this campus, so we're not using processed water, potable water for, for this campus, which is, which is a big deal. We do pump it, so there's a small use of electricity, but on balance, it's not much. And we are, we are also adding plantings and zero-scaping as we go in, in small patches, and you'll see them out there. So we are making progress, although slow, but we are making progress along those lines. And I might add that today, from noon to 1:00, we had a tour associated with Earth Day, and it was in the paper, that Scott Bucy, our, our landscaping expert led, and I'm not sure how many people he had, but he toured the, the campus and talked about our tree program and our, our low and zero water usage, so, so we are active in that regard.
Thank you. Michael, any other questions? Go ahead.
Oh, I'm just going to echo some of those comments, you're showing the results, building that culture, just even having new hires, new employee orientation, starting to engrain this, embed this into our culture here. Paul Grossgold with, with Fleet and the other department heads too, we are going to be bringing back to your board some efforts to really more efficiently use the fleet. I think it's real opportunities for us there, and I know Paul and his team have great ideas. And, and with that, I also just want to say that there's a great team that's working out there that Jeff's identified, but I really want to recognize Jeff Berg's leadership on this, as he does with any project. He's taken full ownership of this and just really run with it, so great job to you and your team.
One thing that I want to share is that every single agency, every single department's bringing cost savings ideas to, to, to the board, you know, and I think, in the kilometer total, you know, we're going to save a lot of money with the strategic planning that we've had, and, and I want to thank all the, the agency has for all the good work they've done, you know, and for you bringing it together too.
And for your leadership, thank you very much. I mean, this wouldn't happen without your leadership. I appreciate, we all appreciate that.
So receive and file? Okay. Second.
Mr. Grossgold? Yeah, could we just follow up if this meeting is, yeah, as we finish, I just want, yeah, I want to catch you.
Go ahead and vote. And that's approved, and we adjourn.
All right.
Thank you.